This plan, the MUR plan, to be as healthy as possible, so I'm very anxious to serve in this position.
Thank you. We appreciate both of you. We appreciate your service to citizens. You are, of course, welcome to stay for me, but we are not offended if you leave after this point as well.
I'll get on my seat.
Item three, public hearings. No items this week. Four, mayor's items. Mayor's report on community events, city activities, city efforts and initiatives. Mayor, I'm.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a lot of folks here tonight from meetings, so I'll keep it brief. I just want to reiterate what I said in our committee discussion earlier today. How proud I am of our team here at the city of Tulsa and their response to last weekend's tornadoes. The work that they've done around the clock to help property owners, people who live and work in that area recover as quickly as possible has really been extraordinary to see. Also so thankful for the outpouring assistance and strong desire throughout our community to help our neighbors in need in the last few days. I know council like Thomas talks about it as being America's most inner city. And you see that not just in dollars, really in the desire of people to help. So it's been great to see. I'm thankful for the strong interest and support from the state of Oklahoma as well. As of today, the governor declared an emergency which will help folks out in that way as well. So there's a lot of different agencies, a lot of different entities all trying to go there to help Tulsa. And that's a great place to be. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ron. Are there any speakers?
Yes, we have Mr. John Hough on item four A.
Actually, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We talked about this earlier. No, Mr. Hough, I'm just going to be very brief. We talked about this in committee today and we've talked about it on social media extensively. I want to keep reiterating this because we have a lot of property owners who were harmed and we are contacting each one of them individually to get them the assistance they need. We also have a lot of people who work at the places that are damaged that may be temporarily unemployed because the place where they work is out of business for a while. And so we're partnering with Workforce Tulsa to help connect those people with jobs here in our community. If anybody works at one of those places and is out of work because of that, please contact workforce Tulsa at workforcetulsa.com and they will do everything they can to make you a job.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hough.
Thank you. I'm thankful for our Honorable Mayor GT Bino moving every time. We have entered a new season as we remain united, much appreciated by your company. Appreciate your team, consciousness, community consciousness and your love for the city of Tulsa and for the people of Tulsa as well. I'm thankful for all of Tulsa's leaders to be there as leadership through our efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Hough. Item four C, donation of CMP super easement located at 3801 South 145 East Avenue by RC Battle Creek LLC for IDP 8414. D, donation of Overland Drained Easement located at 3801 South 145 East Avenue, parcel A by RC Battle Creek LLC for IDP 8414. E, donation of Overland Drained Easement located at 3801 South 145 East Avenue, parcel B by RC Battle Creek LLC for IDP 8414. F, special event application Tulsa Drillers Teams scheduled for September 2017 at 1-0 Field 201 North Elgin Avenue. H, special event application BOK Financial and Global Mammoth Round Clinic scheduled for October 4th, 2017 at First Street and South Boston Avenue. I, special event application Film on the Lawn scheduled for August 25th, 2017 at Philbrook Museum of Art, 2727 South Rockford Road. Are there any speakers?
Yes, we have two speakers. First, we have Mr. John Hough on item four G and four I.
Four G, are we doing that?
Oh, sorry, that was pulled. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Four I, Philbrook Museum, Film on the Lawn. God created the heavens and the earth and included in us His presence. So we partner with Him to make lovely lawns. Philbrook has been beautiful. Film on the Lawn. We're quite certain our lives are on film or video of some kind. And one day we will stand before God and receive at least a part of our lives over again. Help me, Jesus. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. We are so grateful.
Thank you, Mr. Hough. Next speaker?
Mr. Nathan Lee on item four B.
Was that pulled?
Okay, sorry. I'm glad you guys made it. Yes, it was pulled. We'll report your comments whenever it comes back. Is there council discussion? Move for approval for C through I, exclude G. I'm sorry, how did you? Did you say four C, correct? Yes, okay. Keith, please call the roll.
Counselor Kilbrough. Yes. Counselor Hall Harper.
Yes.
Counselor Q. Counselor Patrick. Counselor Ewing. Yes. Counselor Gilbert.
Yes.
Counselor Doxson.
Yes.
Counselor Merrick.
Yes.
Counselor Lakey.
Yes.
Items four C, four I, exclude G are approved. Five, authorities, boards and commissions. B, addendum, partial location of a village on Utica, Platte 5772, making a portion of an Overland Drained Easement. C, addendum, final platte, CW on 71st subdivision located east of the southeast corner of West Central Street, South and South Elwood Avenue. TMAPC voted 800 to recommend approval of the platte. Are there any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Is there council discussion? Move for approval of item C. Keith, please call the roll.
Counselor Kilbrough.
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper.
Yes.
Counselor Q.
Yes.
Counselor Patrick.
Yes.
Counselor Ewing.
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert.
Yes.
Counselor Doxson.
Yes.
Counselor Merrick.
Yes.
Counselor Lakey.
Yes.
Items five B and five C are approved. Six, ordinances per se. A, ordinance permitting the fiscal year 2017-18 budget to make supplemental appropriations of $34,029.09 from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to be received within the 2001 buyer sales tax cut. Without objection, item six A will be forwarded to the next council meeting. Seven, ordinances secondary. A, ordinance permitting the fiscal year 2017-18 budget to make supplemental appropriations of $103,000 from grant revenues to be received within the Department of Transportation K-9 explicitly texted to the general fund. B, ordinance permitting the fiscal year 2017-18 budget to transfer unencumbered and unextended appropriation balances of $190,000 between counties within the general fund. C, ordinance permitting the fiscal year 2017-18 budget to transfer unencumbered and unextended appropriation balances of $50,000 between departments within the general fund. D, ordinance permitting the fiscal year 2017-18 budget to make supplemental appropriations of $416,954 from fund balances within the permitting and licensing fund. E, ordinance closing a portion of an Overland Easement located at 662 East 109 Place South requested by ALTA and San Diego. F, ordinance closing a portion of an Overland Drained Easement located at 1632 East 31st Street requested by Yurko Brothers LLC. G, ordinance closing two sections of a utility easement located south of the intersection of South Elspino Avenue and East 119 Street South, Wayne River subdivision requested by J.C. Brown. H, rezoning ordinance PUD 3790 for property located south of the southeast corner of East 66 Street South and South Memorial Drive from PKCS PUD 379 to CSCD PUD 379D requested by Nicole Watts, KKT Architects, Inc., property owner, Village of Gullim Hills. TMAPC voted 700 to recommend approval of PUD 379B. I, rezoning ordinance Z7402 for property located south of the southeast corner of East 66 Street South and South Memorial Drive from PKCS PUD 379 to CSCD requested by Nicole Watts, KKT Architects, Inc., property owner, Village of Gullim Hills. TMAPC voted 700 to recommend approval of CSCG 79. J, rezoning ordinance Z7399 for property located east of the northeast corner of East Ford Street and Southern Avenue from RM1 to OL requested by Nicole Watts, KKT Architects, Inc., property owner, E3 House Properties LLC. TMAPC voted 800 to recommend approval of OL 79. K, rezoning ordinance Z7401 for property located east of the northeast corner of East 46 Street North and North 129 East Avenue from IH to IH requested by Nicole Watts, KKT Architects, Inc., property owner, Tulsa Ascent LLC. TMAPC voted 700 to recommend approval of IH 79. L, rezoning ordinance Z739A for property located east of the northeast corner of East 36 Street North and North Sheraton Road from RMH to IL optional development plan requested by DL 79. Property owner, 34 Peoria LLC. TMAPC voted 620 to recommend approval of CH zoning with optional development plan. M, rezoning ordinance Z7396 for property located west of the southeast corner of East 36 Street North and North Sheraton Road from RMH to IL optional development plan requested by Camper. Property owner, Noah Trust, Gary Page, Janet Danny Orton and Howard E. and Alice A. Noah Trusts. TMAPC voted 700 to recommend approval of IH zoning with optional development plan. N, rezoning ordinance Z7400 for property located at the southeast corner of South Mingle Road and East Admiral Place from OLCS to CG with optional development plan requested by Jared Sanders, AKT Engineering, property owner, 66 Mingo LLC. TMAPC voted 700 to recommend approval of CG zoning with optional development plan. Are there any speakers?
Yes, we have two speakers. First, we have Mr. John Hough on item seven A and seven C.
Thank you, councilors. Seven A, backup documentation speaks of our police department, for which I am grateful. Yes, Tulsa has an excellent police department. Yes, all our first responders, all our first responders do a great job. Backup documentation also refers to homeland security, for which I am also glad we have. As the Tulsa United 24/7 Worship Center brings support in worshiping God, the Father, our Lord Jesus Christ in our city and all over the nation. Our homes and lands will be even more secure as angels, police and other first responders team up to keep us safe. And let's see, seven C, funds to go for a better way. The imploring of folks who seem to have to handhandle in Tulsa is included in this better way. This is a great idea, a groundbreaking idea, says Reverend Steve Wicker with John 3:16 in mission. And of course, Jesus tells us in John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that he gave his own begotten sons, that whoever believes in him shall not perish but have everlasting life." I'm grateful for our Honorable Mayor GT Bino moving forward with this a better way. It's a good idea and it's also a good idea to keep in mind, impart, that Jesus is the way, the truth and the Lord. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Mr. Hough. Any speaker, please?
Yes, Ms. Joy McCondishee on item seven B, C and D.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joy McCondishee and I'm here to ask some questions regarding seven B, C and D. And I was wondering where, first of all, I wanted to explain my absence in the city council meetings. I had been, number one, working with my son. He's returning to Lexington on his third year of college. So I'm excited about that. But I've also been volunteering in our community with the Food on the Move Drive and Edrec in North Tulsa. And I've opened up a library out of my own home where I've been passing out snacks and books for the children there. And I'm a bit exhausted at this point because my time has been otherwise spent more wisely. But at this time, I'm here to wonder, what is the $656,954, which is the total of those two ordinances, B, C and D? And it says that those funds are unencumbered and unextended, I believe is the correct terminology. And I'm just wondering if it's going into the general fund. And somebody correct my point of clarification. If the general fund is not to be used for almost anything in the city, I'm wondering then what better reason could we use those funds for than a grocery store in North Tulsa? And I'm asking, I know that $656,954 and some change is not a lot and it's not enough to actually build what it says in D, that some of that money could be used for licensing. And I was wondering then if we could use some of those proceeds to at least start a process in which we could transfer some of those funds and use it for licensing or purchasing property which is abundant in North Tulsa. And maybe we could buy a grocery store or at least utilize those funds in that area. And that's what I wanted to ask.
This isn't really the forum where we do question and answer sessions on things, so I'm sure that there will be councilors, I mean, we have to talk to you afterward about, you know, any specific questions, but we don't really do questions and then get into all of the agenda items here. In general, all of the, when money's being, just as an FYI, I mean, when money's being moved back and forth, it's not because all of a sudden there's a bunch of free money and suddenly they budgeted things. And sometimes it's planned transfer because it's just part of the nature. Money comes in through one source, moves to another in the budget. But oftentimes it's because you have money generally within, similar things within the department, say, they may move from one area to another or you may, in some cases, we end the year and they have money, because it's budgeted and they don't know, maybe deploy left, but another department may be up or down. So it happens like that in the budget in general. On the council union, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I just.
Thank you for your questions.
Two things to maybe help provide clarification. Sometimes these kind of general explanations here at our council committee meetings, typically someone from finance comes down and explains the specifics of why the amounts are being transferred from one department to another. As it is in almost every area of government, there's not typically, at least in City Hall, a bunch of extra cash laying around. To Counselor Merrick's point, it's being transferred. It's oftentimes because of a need in another department after the budget's made once a year. But throughout the year, budgets and amendments take place all year long to address unexpected needs or things like that. So in terms of the government funding a grocery store, there are things that government can do to help facilitate private development in terms of, you know, land acquisition or incentives or things like that. But it has not typically been the practice of this government or almost any other to get into the for-profit enterprise of grocery stores or any other type of retail business. So I think that there is, and we want it that way. I think we should all want it that way. The government leaves private enterprise, private businesses when conditions, for one reason or another, don't typically support that, as we have seen in this case. I do think there, there should be initiative from the local government to be a partner in helping to solve the kind of problems that we're discussing. So I don't think we want a government-owned grocery store in this town, but I do think we should all hope that the local government's aware of the condition and actively working with private developers and what they can do to help solve this problem. So this issue has raised that awareness throughout this building and I believe throughout the community. And I'm hopeful that the conversation tonight is a productive one that further propels us towards solutions. So I hope that helps to answer the question. I appreciate you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely, Councilor. And I appreciate the point of clarity, Councilwoman America. And I then want to clarify myself. And I should not have posted as a question anywhere other than to Counselor Ewing. I then think at this point, then maybe we should set a precedent for government intervening at some point because as I see it, in the last 11 years that I've returned here from Los Angeles, it seems more economic blind and I hate to think that it's intentional economic blind. And so if the government at this point needs to intercede, then I would appreciate a precedent being set.
Thank you. And I think Mayor Bino maybe wanted to add a comment?
Well, just, I mean, all of this is in the backup material, which you said, and we got two on the line. But just to answer your very basic question as to what these are. So B is a, we have, right now, we're overhauling the entire finance system for the city. We're using a system from the early 90s, which the dangers are really financial wearable and tracking how we spend money, to your point. And doing that, we're utilizing, utilizing a lot of city employees, including folks out of our finance department. But we still have, while we're getting that system running, a lot of other responsibilities from day-to-day finance and accounting responsibilities. So this is to bring in CPAs on a temporary basis, to keep those day-to-day accounting responsibilities moving while we're bringing this system online. C is simply moving funds. We budgeted $50,000 for the Better Rate Program that Mr. Hough was talking about, that we're going to use to help the folks who are out handling. We passed the budget, included that under the category of general government. But now we're getting ready to issue RFP and eventually contract. And that's going to be done by our asset management department. So all this is doing is moving that $50,000 in our budget from general government to asset management. And then on B, again, this is part of the overall change we're making in our finance software to fund the, we're also updating the system that we use for our permitting and licensing and software for that. This is just reflecting that we're taking the funds from permit fees that have been paid and allocating that towards that software purchase. So to Counselor Ewing's point, these aren't purchases, you know, this isn't money that, I think it's Counselor Merrick, money that's laying around that we're coming up with. This is all stuff that we were already planning for that was just allocated in one area and now to be very specific in our budgeting, we're putting it in the for-profit place. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And I met your son. He's a very nice man.
Oh, yes, sir. He was surprised to see you. Yes, sir. And so I think that on, I think at C, that if we do include North Tulsa in some of those stops, because we really do need jobs in those areas. And so I do see some encouragement in B and C that some temporary jobs may be available. So I know that we have some CPAs out there that need jobs. And I just am hopeful that North Tulsa will be included in some of those pickups for those people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the mayor makes a good reminder there that, and most of you probably know that, but when you go online and you look at the agenda, you can click over on the backup material and it goes into more details on everything on it. It's on the agenda, almost always has some backup information. And you can look there and see answers to some of these questions or reach out to us if you have additional questions. That was our last speaker on that, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there any council discussion? Move for approval of seven A through A. Keith, please call the roll.
Counselor Kimbrough.
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper.
Yes.
Counselor Q.
Yes.
Counselor Patrick.
Yes.
Counselor Ewing.
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert.
Yes.
Counselor Doxson.
Yes.
Counselor Merrick.
Yes.
Counselor Lakey.
Yes.
Items seven A through seven, seven N are approved. Next up is item seven O, and I know many of you are here for that and many of you have signed up to speak. I wanted to, we know there's obviously a lot of interest in this item and we want to hear from the citizens. I do want to remind you of the council procedures regarding receiving comments at the council meetings. Individual speakers are allowed a total of up to five minutes for the, during the entire meeting. And so if someone has spoken previously, that all adds up together. So obviously, that's only a couple people. That's applied to. You should have, when you signed up to speak with Casey, should have said you were in for or against. We'll have all the speakers for first. And when we have groups of six or more, and I believe on the for side, what did you say the numbers were? Seventeen?
Seventeen and then a second half, six.
Six, okay. So normally what we do is allow a 30 minutes total per side. So when we have larger groups, we would ask you to shorten some of the comments. I mean, when there's a lot of, you know, we'll end up hearing a lot of the same comments. Kind of within the, the people who are speaking is sort of amongst yourself because you will be called in order that you signed up. So we would encourage you to sort of be cognizant of the time of the others who are speaking and not be repetitive and things like that, just to help get as many people as possible to speak. Did you have a comment for, for Counselor Hall Harper?
I would like to ask that the rules be relaxed because we do have a little bit of a queue here. And I would like to, for everyone to have an opportunity to speak and to continue to keep in mind that, you know, not to take the entire five minutes, but I do like to ask that, uh, move that the rules be relaxed for that purpose.
So you're making those a motion? Do you have a specific time limit or anything that you're including as your motion? Or?
If I, if I may.
Please.
The seventeen for, if they spoke for a minute and 45 seconds each, would take 30 minutes. Typically, most of what needs to be said can be said in about two minutes. So if I could, like, friendly clarify, if we just created a two-minute for a person baseline?
I'd say at least three.
All right. Well, we can always ask follow-up questions of the person who speaks if they need to be, if they weren't finished giving the speech. But it helps keep the comments at a reasonable. So people can stay longer than two minutes if the topic is done because the councilors can ask. You can ask a question of every person that speaks beyond that, but it helps people to kind of prepare their thoughts to be in session. And it would allow the time for it to go longer than the baseline.
So move.
So we're basically saying two minutes a person instead of a very limited total time.
For the, on the against side, the other side would get their, their full thirty minutes as well.
If you want it to be fair, the other side is being prepared. Saying, um, the time, that would be quite a long speech.
No, right. No, they're, so I'm saying, I don't, I'm sorry, Counselor Hall Harper, all these things. Right. So they still have a thirty minutes on the show.
Right.
So there's a motion on the, on the boardroom?
Madam Chair, purposes of clarification is the motion to allow up to three minutes for those speaking in support of.
I think up to two minutes was the subject. It wasn't quite clear because it's Counselor Hall Harper's motion and I think it was being worked on, you know, Counselor Ewing added that we can always just ask questions. So the motion is for two minutes on the against side, correct? Per person on the against side? For, for side, sorry. Okay, that's the motion.
And I'll say.
Keith, please call the roll.
Counselor Kilbrough.
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper.
Yes.
Counselor Q. Counselor Patrick.
Yes.
Counselor Ewing.
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert.
Yes.
Counselor Doxson.
Yes.
Counselor Merrick.
Yes.
Counselor Lakey.
Yes.
Madam Chair, since I'm the time keeper, I'll clarify. Do I warn each person in two minutes that they're filed up?
Yes.
So two, two.
Yeah, so, so Counselor Patrick will be the timekeeper and just to repeat what he just said. So he will warn you and he'll give you your 30 seconds and a minute and a half. And again, while, while councilors can ask and you can go on, please kind of just try, you know, we're trying, we want to, this is an effort to try to give everybody a chance to speak. So if we could, as much as possible, try to stick within that, that would be great. Casey will call the names. And what she'll do is call, she'll say who the next person is and then give another name or two, so you'll know if you're going to be, you know, when this person's done. And you can go ahead and move up, up closer to the front if you want. And we will have the four speakers first. Okay, Casey, are you ready? Can you call the first speaker on the for side, please?
Yes, Mr. Tyrance Billingsley, followed by Unaiya Frank and then Angela Graham.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. I know there are a lot of people here.
Sorry, sorry, this is, we won't count this on your time, we have a clarification or questions? I'm sorry? Oh, good point, I don't, with all that discussion, I don't think I actually read it. So your time is not ticking yet, sir, just stay right there. Uh, seven O, ordinance declaring a one hundred and eighty-day moratorium on the acceptance of applications for processing of, and issuance of building permits or certificates of occupancy that would allow construction on or use of property for certain retail sales of convenience goods or consumer shopping goods herein described as a small box discount store, initiating an amendment of the Tulsa zoning code to provide for appropriate dispersal of small box discount stores, providing an appeal process, providing effective and repeal dates, providing severity with the emergency cost. Okay, go ahead, your time, sir, now.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I realize there are a lot of people here who want to speak, so I'm going to be very brief and I'll be very detailed point. And I'm not going to bombard you with policy, I'm here to prompt you to think for a moment. The root of this moratorium is an issue that I know you're all aware of, which is the ten-point-seven-year life expectancy gap between North Tulsans and the rest of the citizens of the city, which North Tulsans will tell you is due to lack of access to a dollar store that offers healthy food and the massive proliferation of dollar stores that only offer unhealthy alternatives. Now, as big a problem as this is, and even greater problem, or just as great a problem, is the issue that it represents. And that issue is the longstanding notion in my community that, when it comes to the lives and the well-being of North Tulsans, that there is a lesser sense of urgency. And that this is a very important issue, because when I, when I ask you to think about this, what I want you to think about is, I want you to try harder to understand what, striking down this moratorium, what message you will be sending. Because this moratorium is a well-crafted answer to a problem that we feel we've had in this community for a very long time. And that, I know, because of what I do right now, there are very important and good strides being taken to heal the divide between that ten-point-seven-year life expectancy gap. But what this moratorium is, is, it's something that the community has gotten behind, and that's why you see all these people out here in fear of supporting it.
You have thirty seconds.
So what I want to prompt to you is, I want you to understand, I know, I know I've had the opportunity to meet all of you, but more than anything, I want you to understand what message you will be sending to the community and to all these people who are here firmly supporting this, if you were to strike it down. I yield my time.
Thank you, next speaker?
We have Uvaya Frank, followed by Angela Graham.
Mayor G.T. Bynum, Tulsa City Councilors and citizens of Tulsa. At no surprise to anyone, the city of Tulsa has a long history of racial inequality. Just last week, a few members of my community and I sat down with Human Rights Watch, an American-founded, international, non-governmental organization that conducts research and advocacy on human rights. This past weekend, a few members from my, from the Black Wall Street Times team, along with other residents of our North Tulsa community, met with a team of nationally-recognized developers and activists. And yesterday, I spoke to an internationally-recognized organization. All groups asked what they could do to help bring attention to the disparities of the descendants of the people who built America's Black Wall Street. These advocacy groups extended hands, is an indication that we need help. Shamefully, these institutions are coming from the outside. From the outside, they recognize the lack of empathy and admiration the city of Tulsa continues to harbor against its African-American citizens. Embarrassingly, we are just four years shy of this intell, of the nineteen-twenty-one Tulsa massacre, and our city's black constituents continue to experience inequality. When it comes to how North Tulsans and South Tulsans perceive race relations in the city of Tulsa, the cognitive dissonance is astronomical. Why do we boast one Tulsa when the disparities between black and white Tulsa citizens are so extreme? Here's the, racism is a, racism and culture, here's the definition, that believe that some races are inherently superior to others, and therefore have a right to dominate them in the United States. Racism, particularly by blacks, by whites against blacks, has created profound racial tension in the city. So let's talk about institutional racism. What are the signs of institutional racism? It is reflected by disparities regarding wealth, income, criminal justice, employment, housing, healthcare, political power, and education, among other things. So when you look at the ten-point-seven-year life expectancy gap, the median household income gap between blacks and whites is thirty-eight-point-fifty-two percent. Home ownership is forty, is forty-point-forty-eight percent. Poverty gap is one hundred and eighteen-point-thirty-one percent. Nearly one in two African-American children live in poverty in Ameri, in, in the state of Oklahoma. One in two African-Americans males are locked up in Oklahoma. Oklahoma has the highest incarceration rate for women of color.
Sir, we, we have counselors who are willing to ask questions. We have counselors who are willing to, to help you fulfill the time, but we ask you to respect what we're trying to do as well. So if we ask you, if your time's up, if you pause, I suspect that we have a counselor who will ask a question and let you continue, but please respect our process and let us do that in a kind of orderly way. So we, we appreciate that. Next speaker, please.
If I can clarify that, we, when your time is announced as being finished, if you'll just pause a minute, if, if there's cause for a counselor to then, by process, ask a question, like, "Sir, would you like to finish saying what you were saying?", then everybody is more alert and prepared to listen to the rest of your talk, then we don't.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to hear what you were saying, and I feel that some of it got lost at the end there, because there was a, a times-up kind of alert. So you've got, you've got people up here who are interested in hearing what you have to say, and will make sure to.
Can I speak to that? Can I respond to you?
Sure.
Okay, my response to that is, as I'm sitting here, this is, the, the city has a long history of, of oppressing people's voice here. So when my community sees you guys get together, whether it's happened before or not, whether this is something that you do on a regular basis, whenever there's just a ton of people in the room, regardless of race, but to us, it seems like you're trying to oppress our voices. You're trying not to hear us, that's what that seems. So that's the reason why I have this defense.
So, so, I appreciate that, sir, and, uh, I can't speak for my colleagues, but as I said, I am interested in hearing what you have to say. And we have the ability and authority to, to keep you up here talking as long as there's something to be said in everything. And so I, I don't know what the experience has been with this group in the past, but as long as I've been a member of this city council, which is more than half a decade at this point, when issues of tension, especially involving race, have come before us, I believe that the track record has been well-established, that there's, there is room for open, even difficult conversations in this room. And you have friends behind you who I believe would agree with that sentiment. We've discussed difficult issues here, and I even believe we've discussed them respectfully and appropriately. So we're going to do everything that we can, I, I do believe I can speak for this group in this regard. This is a group of people interested in hearing what you have to say tonight, and, and is not going to try to shut you off. But there has to be some trust at the beginning, that you are not being oppressed, but that we would like to hear everything that you have to say.
Uh, Reacher Grant would say that I have a va, a validated bias against your, your, your answer.
And so I'm, I'm telling you, you've got neighbors who I recognize in this audience who have been in this room many times before, and have always had a chance to be heard, and have been well-respected in this room. I can't speak for your institutional interactions historically, or government in general, or whatever, but I can tell you with confidence that this city council, as long as I've been here, has been willing to have difficult conversations, even about race, and has done a nice job of being respectful even to dissenting views. So things may not go as you want tonight, I can't make any promises there, but I can promise you that this council is committed to, to hearing what needs to be said in this room, with open minds and open hearts this evening, and that we will give you the opportunity to hear.
Can I, can I have one more response? Why not five minutes? If it's such a serious issue, if it's such a serious issue as a ten-point-seven-year life expectancy gap, are these people not worth the five minutes to speak each?
That's a fair question. So we, we have a, we have responsibilities beyond, uh, just the, the conversation in the city council this evening. There are many city employees that have to stick around here tonight, security guards, people who keep the building open, staff that are providing support, all of those things are under consideration. This is not new, it's always been council rules that we allocate certain amounts of time.
Can I respond to that?
This is the last one.
I'm not sure we're.
There's sixteen other people that, that still.
The majority of this council is white. And whether you choose to believe it or not, many of you may have implicit biases against people of color. Some of you may, and it may be intentional, and for some of you, it may not be intentional. I will tell you a quick story. When I went to college at Oklahoma State University, I went to my, to my professor, and I told him, "I have something to tell you." And I said, I told him, I said, "Hey, every time I sit in a classroom and there's a white male teacher, I get nervous, because I'm afraid that he's going to judge the way that I speak, that he's going to judge the community that I come from, that he's going to, uh, think that I'm, I'm not intelligent." And when I did that, I started healing, because I had a, a bias against white males, because of the history. When I was four years old, I had four police officers come to the car, I was a little kid, and I remember looking out the window and seeing these police officers have their, their guns drawn to the car. I was with my mother, who's right here, she has pulmonary sarcoidosis, she's in stage five. She has less than five years to live. Here's another Tulsa who's not going to make that, who's not going to close that ten-point-seven-year gap. I really believe that the way that this council, I'm, I'm, do I, do I still have my time?
Your time is, is well expired, sir.
Finish this, if you, and then, we do have a lot of other people here, so, great.
And that's the, that's the real reason, is that when an issue is a hot issue like this, that a lot of people are interested in, in expressing themselves on, we set time limits and things like that, to be respectful to the voices of everyone. And we've seen it before, where the first ten people get up, eat up every second of their time. And we're at ten o'clock at night, and half the room hasn't even had a chance to get up yet. So we, we put some order in place, not to suppress people's voice, but to make sure that everyone who has something to say, has an opportunity to say. So you might not trust me, but I'm telling you, we are working hard to make sure that everyone here has a chance to be heard tonight, and that we're going to listen. Okay?
Thank you.
Next speaker.
If I may, the fact that the process was circumvented about the last thirty seconds of what you were saying was lost, and really trying to get you to follow the process.
Now, now, now.
No, it's okay, we're, we have, you got a chance to, 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 I know, I know. So everybody understands what we're doing now, we appreciate that everyone's on board. Next speaker, and then, did you say the next one after this one, Casey, please, I'm sure you did, but just to remind us.
Yes, right now we have Ms. Angela Graham, followed by Twyla Gibbons.
Thank you.
Time and again, Tulsa's white citizens, including members of this city council, have continued to undermine efforts of the citizens of North Tulsa to bridge the gap in life expectancy and other disparities. Continuing to drown out and interrupt the voice of Counselor Hall Harper and citizens of North Tulsa will not change the fact that these disparities do indeed exist. Now is the time for the white city counselors of Tulsa to show their support, their love, and equality for the North Tulsa community by voting for the moratorium before you tonight. I wave my hands.
Thank you, next speaker.
I'm Elizabeth, followed by Ada B.C. Williams.
I'm just here to say ditto to, uh, being aware of the need of North Tulsa. I'm very thankful for Vanessa Hall Harper's leadership, and that she is saying to us, "Take a breath." A moratorium is taking a breath and reassessing the situation. And I think this crowd shows the community is behind this moratorium. And so I am here to witness, this is, well, I'm not going to assume everybody here is on the same path, but I, I am here to witness, and so I also give my, uh, time.
Tell us your name again.
Twyla Gibbons.
Okay, fine.
Next speaker, please.
Ada B.C. Williams, followed by Kristi Williams.
Good evening. I understand that some of you have concerns that the moratorium will be for the greater area of Tulsa and not just North Tulsa, but my counselor wanted specifically for North Tulsa. Um, but the legal and planning didn't write it to specifically say North Tulsa, so, um, kind, kind of just sounds like sabotage a little bit. But, you know, truth is, um, there isn't one of you who would even want a dollar store in your community, or either another one in your community. So I serve this country as an AMI, of course, but. Please allow my say and my community's say, um, please allow us to have a say in the type of development that goes into our community, because something obviously is wrong when you deny that opportunity, so, thank you.
Kristi Williams, followed by Gregory Robinson.
Good evening, that's my baby, by the way.
Good job.
Um, I, I really can't believe that I am here today for this issue. Um, it's, it's crazy, because when you hear the reasons against it, it's really an attack on, on your intellect. Um, we, we are dealing with this life expectancy gap. You know, ten-point-seven years, North Tulsans live ten-point-seven years shorter than those in South Tulsa. And my, my city councilor is asking for a one hundred and eighty-day moratorium to stop the development of these dollar stores. Here are some facts. We have four, okay, four hundred and nine signatures on a petition that's stating that we do not want a dollar store in our community. Eighty-one percent of the products in dollar stores are made with toxic chemicals, such as lead, that causes birth defects, autism, cancer, asthma, and learning disabilities. I'm not anti-development, nor is my city counselor anti-development. I just want to live ten-point-seven years longer. And I want my children to live ten-point-seven years longer, and I want my community to live ten-point-seven years longer. Majority of you get that opportunity. And I know a lot of people thought that I was going to come up here and call. I know a lot of people's going to, you know, think I was going to come up here and call you all racist. I know you all love black people. See, I, 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 I understand, I, I understand that racism has nothing to do with hatred or emotion at all, but it has everything to do with privilege and power. We're here today to ask, can we live ten-point-seven years longer? It's, it, it's, it's in your hands, we're asking, can we live ten-point-seven years longer? And you all get to choose, people or profit.
Did you have something else to say?
Yes, Counsel. It's really a simple decision, a very simple decision. And your decision today will ring loud, and it will ring clear. And again, I'm not going to say that anyone is racist, but I will say some have a soul, and some may be soulless.
Thank you, next speaker. We have Gregory Robinson, followed by J.C. Green.
Good evening, thank you all for this opportunity. I do want to make one clarification, my name is Gregory Robinson II. The reason that I say that is because my father was Gregory Robinson. He fought in this community for a long time, he served on the civil service commission for a long time, and the things that he was fighting for then, before he passed, are the same things that his son is fighting for now. I want to speak to you all, and I want to apologize to my babies in that back row, they go to Langston Hughes. I want to apologize to you, because you grow up in a community where you have eleven less years to make an impact. You have eleven less years to see your dreams. You have 11 less years to see your dreams come true for yourself and for those who come after you. But I want to tell you now to be encouraged. Because I and a lot of the people in this room will not rest until that is no longer the case. So I apologize to you. I'm sorry. I also want to say to the rest of us in this room that we have to stop asking for common decent things that belong to us when we were born. Thank you, sir. We are American citizens. Do you know where 10 points, uh, 10.7 difference in life expectancy puts us? It puts us in the same realm as these countries. Uzbekistan, Nepal, Indonesia, Iraq. It is not a slight against those countries, but I ask you, where do you live?
Your time has expired.
Thank you so much.
You have anything else to say?
I do, I do, and I appreciate that. What I'm saying to us is, what I'm saying to us is, is that we have to have the decency amongst ourselves to not just fall for anything. We have to take the power back. They have the power to vote, we have the power to vote as well. It's not just about a grocery store, we all know that. It's not about a dollar store, we all know that. We are treated and live in a third world country from the way that we wake up and look at the grass that the city owns that is not cut. From the way that we go to the schools that our tax dollars pay for, that the surface is not the same on one side of town as it is on the other. When we drive down the street and the streets are not the same on one side of town as they are on the other. There goes on and on and on that in this country, in this city that we live in, when we are underneath the same laws, for some reason, our lives mimic third world countries instead of the greatest country on earth, which we proclaim to be. So I challenge all of you all to hold your power firm and to make a guarantee to yourself that you will no longer be stepped on, whether it's this issue or the next, that you will stand up now and you will continue standing up from this day forward. I thank you all so much.
Next speaker, please.
We have J.C. Green, followed by Kristen Toll.
You might, you might say it one more time just so David can get it. Can you say the names again, Casey, please?
J.C. Green, followed by Kristen Toll.
Thank you, councillors and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss the ordinance requesting a 100 day moratorium on the building of small box discount stores. However, we all know that the primary issue here is the proliferation and continued additions of the Dollar General type of store. In addition to the aforementioned concerns regarding healthier options for North Tulsans, I would add the concerns about reducing the property values of the homes and the neighborhoods in which the stores are placed. This moratorium will allow more time for thoughtful discussions about this issue. Please reconsider the continued development of Dollar General type stores within the North Tulsa community. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Kristen Toll, followed by Sharika Stewart.
Kristen Toll.
Is Kristen Toll here? Okay, sorry, the next speaker?
We have Sharika Stewart, followed by Chief.
Greetings, Mayor Bynum. Honestly, as a young adult sitting in the city council meeting on last week for the very first time, I was finally awakened. As Councilwoman Vanessa Hall Harper proposed a moratorium to her fellow colleagues, I was disturbed by the energy in the room as well as the lack of empathy. She stated that we have 15 dollar stores already in North Tulsa. We don't need another one. No one agreed and stated it would take data and research to help them understand the benefit concerning taxes. I immediately thought to myself, okay, research means the systematic investigation into and studying of materials and sources in order to establish facts and research to reach new conclusions. And data means facts and statistics collected together for references or analysis. Our amazing mayor, G.T. Bynum, even acknowledged the life expectancy gap, stating that South Tulsans live 10.7 years longer than North Tulsans. You can drive yourself to North Tulsa right now and see with your own eyes that our community is screaming out for help. There are no grocery stores and a great deal of poverty. Even Stevie Wonder can see that. In my honest opinion, it's no mystery that North Tulsa is being neglected. What we are dealing with today in Tulsa has been an issue for almost a century. And the people who we trust the most are being, aren't being held accountable. How can we trust you when the trust has never been restored nor earned? How can we understand you when you say you care about us when your actions say completely different? You are never judged by your intentions, always by your actions. Today we are here to not only hear what you have to say.
Your time has expired.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Today we are here to not only hear what you have to say. I heard enough of that last week. We want to see your actions. If you say you love Tulsa, there is no sign in Northside. We want our voices to not only be heard, but to be valued. On Monday, catch this, listen very closely. On Monday, I intentionally asked my mentor, who happens to live at Southern Hills and also happens to be white, what she thought about Dollar General, just randomly. She stated, oh, Dollar General is good for Christmas wrapping paper, kid toys, and, oh yeah, candy. I asked, well, what about produce? She said, Rika, oh no, honey. That's what sprouts and research is for. But if you want a really good deal, go out to Costco's. It sounds funny, but guess what? I wanted to ask her, what about my mentee Jayla, who's seven years old and can't drive to the store? Neither can her mom because she has cancer. What do I do? I couldn't say anything because I was lost in words.
Next speaker, please. We have Chief, followed by Richard Baxter.
Casey, while we're waiting for, uh, Mr. Chief or however we say it, sir, the, hold on one second. We have a speaker who's, and just on the off chance that she had to step out to the bathroom or something, would you, can you read that name again? Just if she's back in here, we'll let her back in the rotation. If not, she may have had to leave.
Kristen Toll?
She's still not present. Okay, I'm sorry, then we'll assume that she had to leave. Um, Mr. Chief?
Someone speaks my language. Okay. First, I would like to say I'm for the moro, um, for the moratorium, with the exception that it speaks to District One. Just wanted to specify that. So thank you for your time, your service. You've seen me enough, I've seen you enough, or maybe not enough, but we've seen each other. So let me get straight to the point. Fact one, in the last 14 years, we've seen very little value added, sustainable economic progress in District One. Because there have been decision makers who clearly don't understand the difference between economic development and economic growth. Nor is there an understanding as how this relates to dollar stores that do not increase property value as a Trader Joe's or a Whole Foods would, according to Zillow. The definition of economic development by noted economist Michael Todorow is an increase in living standards, improvement in self-esteem needs, freedom from oppression, as well as greater choice in life expectancy. Economic development alleviates people from low standards of living into proper employment with suitable shelter. That is clearly not the definition or the purpose of a dollar store. He states that economic growth by definition does not take into account the depletion of natural resources, which might lead to pollution, congestion, and disease. Economic development, however, is concerned with sustainability, which means meeting the needs of the present without compromising future needs. Clearly, the concern here relates to future needs. Fact two. Yes, sir, be sure. Thank you. The last line in fact one is what led me to my final point. Meeting the needs of the present without compromising future needs. In attempting to be scientific, I approached this in a different way. I realized that I had looked at everybody's perception about this issue except the CEO of dollar store chains. I asked myself, what does Family Dollar have to gain by saturating one district with so many dollar stores? In researching my own question, the answer came. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Do you have anything else to say?
Yes, a little bit. What do dollar stores and the passing of Oklahoma State Question 792 have to do with each other? I thought, why not ask the CEO of Family Dollar, Howard Levine? And in a corporate memo, Levine states, more Family Dollar stores will begin selling beer and wine.
No.
Follow me. This is the CEO. Will begin selling beer and wine in Family Dollar, Family Dollar's test markets has been about two to three times higher than other buys. He says liquor sales over July 4th were encouraging. This is not limited to Family Dollar. Dollar General is operating under the same values. I feel there is something very sinister when you have a store that has family in it that sells beer and wine. For those who are more progressive in thinking, what does this mean for District One? Progressive thinkers, those of you who are for the moratorium, please stand. This is for you. You may be seated now. Research and common sense has shown the number of alcohol outlets in a community is directly related to the number of murders, family violence, underage drinking, rapes, and other types of crime, which goes against your objectives as a mayor and as city councillors who is to bring safe policies to a community that may be ridden with crime. The question is, who will be held accountable for this act of soft genocide? And who stands to gain? Certainly not District One. When you look at all the problematic issues that have been presented tonight, the question you are left with is, how can the excessive growth of dollar stores in District One meet the needs of the present without compromising the future needs of District One? In two words, it can't. An, a vote, no, is to contribute to what is known as soft genocide. Please reconsider.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. We have Richard Baxter, followed by Sinceria Robbins.
How y'all doing? Okay, I, I spoke with Foulard before you guys, three years in a row when I do the race against racism every year. Uh, about bringing our city together, you know, that's just, uh, what racism thinks about. I'm a founder, you guys know that. A lot of people here know that. Um, bringing the city together, and Chief just spoke about values. And, um, something that touched me when he spoke about values is, we hear a lot about reconciliation and we hear about resilience in Tulsa. The introduction part doesn't count, this is my time, so reclaiming my time starts now. You like that? All right, so, um, reconciliation, very important to Tulsa to our values. Reconciliation is to make right what was done wrong. We haven't seen that as of yet. I, I host that race and call it the celebration of reconciliation. And it's, as, looking forward, we're moving down this, this, this street, Brady Street, which was a, a KKK street. And, you know, of course, the name's been changed allegedly, but, um, reconciliation, we haven't seen that. And we want to see that, and people working together. This moratorium, if I'm pronouncing it right, I don't even know. But we want to see the reconciliation. And for you to do that, you have to make right what is wrong. The community is crying out. We as people are crying out, hear our voices, listen to us. So we talked about reconciliation and I talked about resilience. Resilience is to bounce back, for the community to bounce back. Thank you, I did. For the community to bounce back, okay, where are we bouncing back from? We all know what happened in 1921. The community did bounce back, rebuilt, and it was, and it was great. Then we know about redlining that came into play. Am I correct, y'all? Do I need to describe, do I need to find redlining for you guys? So we know about redlining. Then we know about urban renewal that came through and how development destroyed the community. We're asking that you don't allow development to destroy our community again. I live on Pine and MLK. Family Dollar is right in my backyard.
That's right.
It's right there, I can walk there. I don't need another dollar store, you know, a few hundred feet down the way. It's unnecessary. We don't need to bring our property value down. My parents came to this country, my dad came here in 77, my mom came here in 1980. Both came from Liberia, they met here in the great city of Tulsa. And they worked hard, they worked their butt off. My dad is at work right now at OSU Tulsa, he's an ORU, graduated from ORU. And he built a house right over there. Six bedroom house, three car garage, three and a half baths. We don't need the property value going down. I'm going to inherit this. You understand? I don't need the property value going down. All right? True story. I just want you guys to, uh, really put into consideration our values as Tulsans. We are all here looking for one Tulsa, we're all here trying to move forward. And please hear our voice, please consider our values as Tulsa for reconciliation. We haven't reached reconciliation yet. This is a step forward. Listen to the people.
Thank you, y'all. Next speaker, please.
Sinceria Robbins, followed by Anya Chen.
Good evening, how are you doing down at the council? I'm glad that I'm able to make this short statement. I just want to say there are, as was said, already 15 Dollar General and Family Stores combined in North Tulsa. Like Baxter said, he can walk to a dollar store, but he can't walk to no grocery store out of any sustenance. So that's, that's, that's a problem that we know that you already know. I don't think there's too many dollar stores in any of your communities, with the exception of Vanessa Hall Harper, Jen Q. What, maybe one, is it 15? Do you have 15 of them? Do you have 15 of them? She does. She does. Five, let's do, five, what is that, a third? We got 15 and now they want to put another one. You know, if economically enhancing the entire city is what the logic is, then the stores should be equally distributed across the whole city of Tulsa. And as far as I know, there is one district among you who refuse to have a Dollar General or a Family Dollar Store in their district. And saying that, we here in North Tulsa say enough is enough. Let us focus this meeting on more pertinent issues like grocery stores that are much needed, clothing stores that are much needed, shoe stores that are much needed, restaurants, even, uh, a, a, a basic cleaner so we can take our clothes to. It's not like these businesses have not been successful in North Tulsa at one time. And I believe with support and encouragement of you to local and national contractors that this would not only enhance employment opportunities, but become a viable and lasting profitable business venture. We on the North Side have financial sustenance that we have to take to other districts, taken away from ourselves. And those other districts, they don't do nothing for the city of Tulsa as a whole. They're worried about their districts and their districts only. And it's not fair, nor even conceivable, that we spend our monies out of our communities for sad communities to continue to prosper while we suffer with Dollar Generals and Family Stores robbing our health and our pockets. No one from different sectors of the city district. No one from different sectors of the city districts come and shop or eat on the north side, spreading wealth and helping to flourish the north side. But with more diverse businesses that would come, that alone would encourage the citizens everywhere in Tulsa, citywide, to shop and buy on the north side.
Do you have anything else to say?
Just one more short comment, thank you. We are taxpaying citizens of Tulsa, Oklahoma, especially on the north side. Now, don't get me wrong, we don't want a handout. It's just simple economic justice, that the city be fair and just on this issue. I don't ever see any of you on the north side, so it's understandable that you would be of the mindset that more of these draining stores could help our city, and maybe more Dollar General and Family Dollar stores would. So vote to spread them around Tulsa, not just on the north side, please. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
If I can, real quick, I just have to take exception to just one thing that you said, ma'am.
Oh, yes, sir.
About the councilors not eating in North Tulsa, and as the resident not skinny person on the council, I will tell you that I believe that some of the best restaurants in the entire community are in North Tulsa, and I'm not just...
And which one is that?
Well, I would say Sweet Lisa's, Rubicon.
Yes, very true.
Wilson Stunt.
And may I respond to that? I understand that, and I totally agree with that, and I do see white folks come on our side to our restaurants.
I was just kind of trying to make a joke, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Because I was talking about as a whole, all the businesses.
Just taking a second to celebrate that there are lots of hidden gems in North Tulsa that a lot of the community doesn't know about, but that make it a true destination in the city to go eat.
Well, my name is Bobby Eaton, and I have a north side communication media service over there for our community, you know? And I've been back here in Tulsa probably about a couple of years now, a little over a couple of years, been going a good twenty-five something years, and I come back to North Tulsa. My home, where I went to Washington High School, you know? And I come back into the community, and I almost started crying for what I saw. Like everything that my dad and Homer Johnson and some of the other guys back in the day, they had built up, a lot of it had been torn down. The community, Dunbar School, and all these historical landmarks destroyed, Greenwood with a bridge going, you know, freeway going through, all kinds of stuff, and I'm saying, man, what happened? What happened to us? You know? I want to ask each and every one of you, who lives in North Tulsa? Two people? You live where about you stay?
Dawson.
Okay, Dawson? Okay, it's over there. You know, it's easy for someone to tell someone what to do with their house, and you're not, you don't live there. Right? Am I telling you that right? You know, come over to someone's house and say, hey, you need to do this, and you need to do that. Every day, I live in North Tulsa, and I deal with the streets of North Tulsa, the oppressed and depressed, the drug addicts, to the attorneys, to the lawyers. And I want to say this, I know what can get you guys, boycott.
Alright, that's it.
It is a painful thing, but when we boycott and we work together, then we can come together.
Next speaker, please. We have Chris Joy, and Condi Sheen, followed by James Johnson.
Can I repeat the first name again? Hope. Oh, yep. Yeah, she already, you already spoke, right? Yeah.
It was not different.
Do I have any time for making? No, she's not. It's five minutes combined. Do I have any time for making? Did we have time for a twenty? Yeah. So if you can, let's give you two minutes, but if you would stick to that, because that probably goes over the five minute total.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell you guys that last night, I wanted some ice cream. And this is a true story, and my friend, friend, who's in the audience, lives downtown at those apartment towers, Central Park Tower, something like that, she wanted some ice cream too. This was our conversation this morning. Now, she could get up and go to Pinkestelle, or whatever the new stuff that they have right here downtown, all this beautiful stuff they have downtown, and get some ice cream. But for me, who live on 56th and North Peoria, the only option that I had was the warehouse market in Turley. And so I ventured over there, because I just wanted some ice cream, it was hot, you know? And I got down there, yes, I did, and the entire ice cream section, the whole freezer was closed.
What?
Yeah, it had broken down, and it had broken down, and they hadn't, you know, fixed it yet, and they didn't reservice it. And so the only option that I had last evening, before dark, because you know, right before dark, to get a little bite of ice cream, was thwarted by the fact that the only grocery store, not in Tulsa, not in North Tulsa, but in Turley, the freezer was broke.
Yes, sir.
And I couldn't get, so I had to opt out for caramel apples, caramel and apples, and they only had four of those. I continued to ask them to reorder this item. I know this sounds funny, but this is the reality of the situation.
Alright.
There were four ninety-nine cent cups of caramel.
Time has expired.
Do you have anything else to say?
Yeah. I have been ordering, because when I go across town, like the young lady said, and I spend my money in the other districts, because my mom lives at Hundred and First and Yale, and that's Lakens District, and you know, so on and so forth, I don't have that problem. But when I come home, I have that problem. And so I asked them to reorder as much of the bigger things of caramel, caramel, whatever, you know, because I got all the kids hooked on it. All the way hooked on it, because the ice cream, and so, and so, and so, in order for the little girl and her grandmother, who were in the produce section with me, for them to experience caramel apple, I opted out, instead of getting all four, the last four, I only took two, so the little girl could have the other two, of which the grandmother promptly took. And I'm saying this because, what do I say to that little girl? And the ice cream section is broke, and the grandmama can't go nowhere else, and neither can I, and I just wonder, can I get some ice cream? Thank you.
Next speaker, please. We have James Johnson, followed by Regina Goodwin.
First, I'd like to say good evening, Madam Chair Lady, Miss America, to the Honorable GTE Bynum, to all of our councilors, and especially to my councilor, Dr. Vanessa Harper. You know, I feel kind of like Bobby. I've been a resident here in Tulsa, fifty-six, almost fifty-eight years. And when I think about the state of North Tulsa, it brings tears to my eyes. You know, Dr. King said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Whatever affects District One directly should ultimately affect all of these districts indirectly. No grocery stores in North Tulsa, to me, is the equivalent of the water poisoning in Flint, Michigan.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know if y'all follow the case in Flint, Michigan, but some of those city councilors are doing tight right now. I just want y'all to think about this one thing. Fifteen Family Dollar and Dollar General stores in one community? When I see little girls and little boys taking mama's food stamp card, EBT card, to go to the grocery store, to go to Family Dollar, to go to Dollar General to get milk, to get juice, to get groceries, that don't bother y'all? Y'all don't feel nothing? I want y'all to think about that. What if your daughter, your son, had to take an EBT card to go get some groceries? Think about that, right? That don't bother y'all? That's all we asking. We want to live. I got a sixteen-year-old son that I'm trying to raise.
Your time has expired.
Yes, I do, thank you, ma'am. That's all I want y'all to think about. That's all we asking you all to do, just do right. Grandma said, baby, right is right, and wrong is wrong, right don't wrong nobody. Just do right. That's all we asking y'all to do as a community, just do right. Because if you don't do right, let me tell y'all about the God that I serve. Isn't it a shame that Almighty God will allow an EF2 tornado to come to Midtown Tulsa to get black folk and white folk to come together?
Next speaker, please. Our last speaker is Regina Goodwin.
Thank you to Mayor Bynum and to the city council. Appreciate y'all giving us the opportunity to speak to this issue. We often come here and kind of know, it's, I'll be quite honest with you, a foregone conclusion, what the vote is going to be tonight, from what we've read, and from some of the folks that we've talked to. But I think tonight, what we want to do is, we at least want to have it on record, that we know that Councilwoman Hall Harper, when she first talked about this moratorium, she talked about it for a particular district, it was narrowly focused, and somehow that's missing in terms of what's being voted on tonight. So I'm wanting to vote, you to vote no, with the condition in our amendment that says it's for District One. And we're saying specifically for that district, because that's where we live.
Yes.
And this is, this is something that we have to deal with, that maybe, maybe you all don't really see in terms of the lives that you live, and the stores, and the options that you have in your communities, in many of your communities. We look at some, two, three years ago, we fought the Dollar Type Store that was going to go right in the same block, right behind the one that's already on Pine, that's where all this started. It had nothing to do with trying to not having growth, economic development, it had to do with the fact that just common sense said to us, if I've got one Dollar Type Store in a block, I don't really need another one in the same block.
That's right.
And that was just common sense for us, and we came out and we fought that, and we were pleased that Tulsa Development Authority and a number of other folks, Incog actually said, maybe, maybe that's a good idea that we hold that.
Thirty seconds.
We come back around, and then a few years later, it's just two blocks up the street. So it's the same argument, we're saying, we want balanced economic development here. We deserve, we have our tax dollars, we know we've got quality job programs, we have tax incentives, we've got all kinds of ways to encourage great growth in this community, and somehow, we're often planned for and not planned with, and we're just saying, folks are coming out time and time again, saying, we're just wanting you all to hear us. We're just saying, not all stores we're trying to help, we're just saying, the Dollar Type Stores.
Your time has expired.
I did want to say this, I did want to say this, that when you talk about goods and services in a community, when you talk about what is a benefit to that community, when you all ask yourselves on this vote tonight, how does that benefit One Tulsa? Really, how does that make us all One Tulsa, or will this vote tonight further divide us? And we're just talking about balanced economic development, and we're hoping that you guys will consider these voices, certainly consider the voice of Councilwoman Harper, and we applaud you for your efforts, thank you. Casey, that was the last speaker for the yes side, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now we have, and I understand that we had seven who signed up before I read the item, on the no side?
Yes, I'm correct.
Okay, so you will be up next, the same, you have the five minute total, but a thirty minute, so obviously, if everybody does five minutes, the last person, no, there's seven. Yeah, seven people, they're all still here, but seven signed up. So again, I would just urge you to keep in mind, you know, keep a little bit short, then everybody will get a chance to get their time, so, okay? Casey, call the first speaker, please.
Our first speaker is Heather Nash, followed by Dr. Alana Turner Addison.
First thing I want to say is, I'm not for a dollar store here, but I am against the moratorium. North Tulsa is unhealthy, unattractive, and perceived unsafe. North Tulsa has the potential to thrive, but it starts with a mindset of assurance of public safety. Safety to know that I can walk, that I can ride my bike, that I can drive my car, that I can visit establishments, and go to a park. Before we can address anything on the table, public safety must be the priority. The lack of public safety makes the community unattractive. We are too quick to lay down with ideas and partners without weighing the opportunity and cost. From my observation, the priority is public safety. There is no need to oppose a moratorium that happens to impact the entire city to address the food desert in North Tulsa. I suggest that our city council focus on public safety, embodying code enforcement, partnering with public schools to create after-school programs, looking at working with Tulsa Transit to do added with public transportation, and crime, and focus on crime, which enriches and beautifies our community. To be quiet, because I was quiet when you all talked.
You guys, yeah, come on, they were, we've been, this has been a great meeting so far, and people have really been respectful of each other, and let's continue that, and let everybody have a voice, please.
And crime, which enriches and beautifies our community to attract new businesses for the betterment of North Tulsa.
Do the leg.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dr. Alana Turner Addison, followed by Jack Cameron.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the city council and the community regarding the hundred and eighty day moratorium in Tulsa. On behalf of the North Tulsa Economic Development Initiative, I want to thank you for all the work you are doing to support the economic interests of Tulsa, specifically North Tulsa. The proposed ordinance does not serve my community, the North Tulsa community well, by making it even more difficult to attract business development in the area. I cannot explain why the big box stores over the years have closed and moved out of the community, but they did. I agree that North Tulsa does not need a proliferation of small box discount stores. But if it was not for the small box discount stores like Dollar Generals and Family Dollars, which are twenty billion dollar plus corporations, there will be no discount stores conveniently located in the North Tulsa to support the community. The questions that the city council leadership and residents should ask are, what would people in the community do if there were no small discount stores in the North Tulsa community? What would many in the community do for their basic consumables? I suppose that the supporters of the moratorium think it is a good thing for people around the 50th and North Peoria area to travel only to Turley, out to the 15th and South Lewis area, or perhaps the 40th and South Peoria area, for consumables who are waiting for a big box store to return to North Tulsa. It makes no sense to diminish options for the people in the community who depend on the convenience of the small box general discount stores in the community. There are individuals who must walk to secure the consumables they need, such as cleaning supplies, toiletries, diapers, waters, and various little food items, et cetera, to provide for their family needs. This ordinance is an anti-competitive ordinance. This ordinance is an anti-competitive ordinance that seeks to reduce business competition. Non-branded and our unhealthy food items that are sold in small-box stores are sold in full-service stores as well. I am not against a full-service store. We need several in the North Tulsa community. Perhaps someone can explain to us why non-branded, unhealthy foods sold in small-box stores if sold in a full-service store is better? If the goal of the city council is not to have any processed food sold in the community, then you should state that in the ordinance and make it applicable to the full-service big-box stores as well. Just to take, just take away the community's ability to choose. But if you do that, you will eliminate the possibility of any establishment building a store in North Tulsa, and perhaps other areas of Tulsa. Is that what you want to do?
No.
I hope you agree that this is not a good thing to stop even temporarily economic development in the city of Tulsa. I would like to encourage the city council to double its efforts and support InteD to bring increased economic development in North Tulsa that will result in high-paying jobs they can have to build wealth in the community. It is disappointing and disturbing to hear rhetoric and reinformation around the hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium. As I read the proposed ordinance being considered, words such as "could," "deserve," "advisable," "repurpose exemption," and "may" stood out, further conveying that a strong rationale doesn't exist at this time. I would appeal to city councils to do what is right and trust yourself. This should not be into a them against us issue. It should not be made into a racial issue or a political issue. I hope the city council will not buy into that type of thought process. North Tulsa is a diverse area with many races in the community. This is an economic issue that will change when the economics of the area change. The difference between North Tulsa and other areas of Tulsa is that there are more economic opportunities in other areas. I agree with others. We have to make North Tulsa economically self-sufficient to reverse the trends of the last forty-plus years. With the adoption of Planet Tulsa, the Thirty-Six Street North Area Plan, and the approval of Vision Tulsa... It was our belief in those in North Tulsa that those would serve as springboard for economic development in North Tulsa. We are still striving and desired to do what we can to realize one Tulsa. Placing a hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium on development that includes North Tulsa will negatively impact our ability to create attract businesses in the area. Let's continue to work together to break the cycle of neglect in North Tulsa and stimulate economic opportunities that support economic development and quality of life improvements. Both note to this moratorium.
Go ahead and finish your, your statement there, your sentence.
I was just gonna say that you can make, you know, I know everybody has read the Tulsa World article where it talks about the Amazon deal, how it's altering the game. I just recently began shopping online through Instacart, and they deliver my food right to my home. I think one of the things we really need to do is begin to educate about the nutritional value and those other options that do exist. But I tell you, and will just assure you, that I do want a full big-box grocery store in the North Tulsa community. But there are other options now where you can't get groceries, even if they deliver to your front doorstep.
Next speaker, please.
We have Jack Anderson, followed by Colleen Webster.
Again, I'm gonna ask you guys, let's give the speakers respect, please.
Good afternoon, council. Hi, and mayor. Hi. I've been sitting back here, and I just noticed that you guys have been throwing everything at you, but the kids don't see. I think it's a shame that nobody realizes and recognizes how much work this council has done to make sure that North Tulsa is moving and growing. We had a vision... I didn't talk when you were talking. We had a vision package that was presented by this council to this city, and it gave a hundred-and-seventy-two million dollars' worth of projects to District Three and District One. There was councilmen who didn't get a thing. And then they say, "And you're not sensitive to North Tulsa?" You are sensitive to North Tulsa. And I'm excited that this council did what you did. And I know that you're gonna have an opportunity to do two other things for North Tulsa. But what really gets me is that some of the same people that fought against the vision package stands up here today asking you to go for this. This is the worst thing that could happen to North Tulsa, is to send a message that we don't want somebody to come to our community. Let me tell you, let me tell you something. If, if this same kind of attitude happened back when Black Wall Street was at its best, and somebody put a resolution to the table to say, "We're gonna tell what kind of businesses can operate in Greenwood area, and we're gonna cut you down." That's, that, we would never have the Black Wall Street that we have today. People brag about Black Wall Street all over. I think what we need to do is a hundred people in this room that know people that's been in business, we need to start a hundred new businesses in North Tulsa. And as long as it's a legal business, we don't need to fight anybody trying to stop them. What happened to you when you had a dream to start a business? What happened to those people? Are we gonna ask this council to disregard those people's rights to start a business? Blake Ewing, he has all kinds of businesses. He saw a need and he filled it. Dollar stores only come because they make money. And I drove around to every Dollar store in North Tulsa. They stay full all of the time. I'm saying that if you don't, if you don't...
Come on.
Time stops right there.
You guys, right. Come on. Listen, ma'am, and, and the folks back here, you really... Everybody listen to everybody on the other side. Let's do, do respect. And, and I get that this is important and this matters to you, but please.
The moratorium, the moratorium is the wrong way to go. If we don't want Dollar stores in our community, don't shop in them. That's all we have to do. Stop shopping in them. That's all we have to do. If we don't want them. Now, this all started because a handful of people got upset because a Dollar store was trying to go in on Pine between Greenwood and, and Peoria. They lost that battle. And now they bring it to this city council, trying to get you to do the same thing that they couldn't do because it wasn't right to stop anybody from doing a business. It's a legitimate business. You got jobs, and you got sales tax dollars. Those are the two things that this city needs more than anything. Jobs and sales tax dollars. I'm saying that if you go for this crap, that would be the worst thing you could do to our community is to make us think that we deserve nothing. Because we are going places. I'm telling you. That hundred-and-seventy-two million dollars' worth of projects, that set North Tulsa on the leading edge of things to come. All we have to do is let things happen. Stop begging. Stop coming up there trying to browbeat you guys into submission so you would go for what they're saying. It is nuts. It is crazy.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
We have Colleen Webster, followed by Ms. Joyce Rogers.
I just wanted to start by saying, glad that we can see both sides of this. He has some great points about economics and how we impede progress and building taxes, jobs. At the same time, it is ridiculous that this is sixteen million issues. So, I, I just wanted to say I look forward to a future in my hometown or a moratorium. Is it necessary to ban the systemic drain of health from citizens? I look forward to a government that doesn't need prohibition to attempt to invoke health. I look forward to unifying causes greater than Dollar stores in my city. I'm truly anxious for the day that we, as citizens, are more able and invited to have seats at the table when it comes to development and policy, when shady deals and bad businesses make way for community and collaboration. I'm against the need for this sort of process when the community garden or food forest are plenty doable in any part of this town. I look, I look forward to a city and citizens working together to create the very real solutions to these problems that uplift us all.
Next speaker, please.
We have Joyce Rogers, followed by Claire Warren Talbert.
Good evening, council. I'm here to tell you all, and I know you all probably don't know, it's a whole lot more in North, in North Tulsa that we need than to be bitching about the Dollar stores. Down the street from me, I live on Fifty-first Street North, and from Fifty-first, Utica Street, Lewis, we got trees shaking hands with each other. They're like, oh, now they kissing one another. Car come through there, and they fall down, and they will kill somebody. And y'all could have a lawsuit against you. See, and this is what I am called into, cleaning up our community and have us looking like everyone... I just left Portland, and I couldn't believe that this is all over the city. It's not in just one area. All of it looks nice. It's just beautiful. They got shopping center. They got Dollar stores right around the corner, on the alley, but they got laying bottles. And they look nice. The whole city do. With that container brick open up up there. They adopted one of our schools in North Tulsa. And I told them, "Y'all not gonna adopt them when I don't give them that." Heartland Elementary. And every year, they gave them ten thousand dollars a year. And they done a field for, uh, uh, room, for a computer room. That's what we gonna have to do. We gonna have to start doing some ourselves. And I expect you all to do that. But now, when we need our tax dollars, you all have a loss. You all should do that. And we shouldn't have to come down here and plead with you all. But it's the same thing we gonna have to do ourselves. And we gonna have to let you all know when they, "Ma'am, I want you to come down right there on the corner of Utica and Fifty-first Street North." In fact, I'm gonna call you and give you my address, and I'll follow you down. Because that's somebody that get hurt, and y'all have a lawsuit against you. There's parrots, um, they're stinking in the summertime. And I would see how those people staying in the house was gonna scream from that. See, all this kind of bit, y'all be hollering about a Dollar store. You don't have to go in if you don't want to. We stay out of it. Because I don't go in them unless I'm on the toilet paper. Y'all stay out of it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
We have Claire Warren Talbert, followed by our last speaker, Carmen Petty.
Uh, yes. Did you, uh, did you get it, Councilwoman? Could you repeat your name?
Claire Warren Talbert.
My name is Claire Warren Talbert. And I'm the Chair of InteD Business Development Chair. And InteD is looking forward to working with all interest party and attracting their full-service grocery store in North Tulsa. Nevertheless, we do not believe that the only way to accomplish this is to prevent economic growth of other stores. I think it's important that we consider, the consideration of moratorium in North Tulsa pod would, would, would a moratorium in North Tulsa actually accomplish? A moratorium in North Tulsa would result in suspension of business development activities. A moratorium in North Tulsa would prevent the community from benefiting in future sale tax dollars. A moratorium in North Tulsa will result, does not support revitalization plan for the North Tulsa community that residents have been involved in at least ten, past ten years. And one of the highest priorities that municipalities should be concerned with is creating jobs, improving the tax base. A moratorium in North Tulsa does not support creation of jobs, building wealth in North Tulsa, Tulsa community. A moratorium in North Tulsa disrupts the community's ability to advocate for creating and attracting desirable businesses into North Tulsa community. A moratorium does not inspire economic growth. The potential return on investment related to Thirty-six Street North Corridor area in North Tulsa, North Peoria Connection in the corner, all as follows. Attract and encourage community investment in North Tulsa. Attract, encourage business retail development in North Tulsa. Increase number of jobs, create and increase income levels of residents will translate into improved quality of life. It will translate into generation of new sale tax dollars. We are asking the city council to both know this proposal, North Tulsa Moratorium. And just for, uh, I can say, I personally, two weeks, two weeks ago, did a drive-by survey, and from Riverside to Admiral, from downtown to Grand Avenue. It's a time of confusion, Dix Beach, and all those other cities as part of Tulsa, the dusty boundaries. And there's forty-five Dollar Generals and Family Dollars in that area. So, it's not against a grocery store in North Tulsa, but there are people in North Tulsa who has the ability to invest in themselves. I would be the first one to put money up in order with a hundred other people to bring two-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand, and ask for investment into building your own grocery store. We build our own store. We don't need the city council to give you a store because they don't have the ability to give you anything. You can't force them to put a store there by putting a moratorium on Dollar General with them. And they, they stuff a package at the same place, Walmarts, Reese's, all those places, packaged their goods in the same companies. They just put the different brand on, on the product. It's all packaged in the same place. Thank you for your talent.
Excuse me, sir.
Ever thought about putting in a co-op grocery store?
I would, I would be in favor of... Just like a black-owned grocery store where a hundred people from North Tulsa who can invest two thousand dollars each and don't worry about the return until about ten years. Because that would create, at least when you go to any small business place to get along, we're coming with something. We're coming with two-hundred thousand dollars, or four-hundred thousand dollars. You work in those stores, employ our children in those stores, and you wouldn't have that, you wouldn't have this because it's owned by my uncle, my brother, my cousin. That's what I'm in favor of. And I would be the first one to put up my money if there were one expecting it. There are plenty of money in North Tulsa to do this. We don't need anyone else to do it. We can do it ourselves.
And that's a suggestion I was looking for. In Colorado, there's a little town called Seprit, Colorado, that I own some property at. There was not a grocery store for sixty-five miles. And so, the community up there got together, and they put their own grocery store in. All the property owners put some money in. They own the grocery store. They, they hire a person to run it, but at the end of the year, they divide the proceeds of the profits. It works. Check into a co-op grocery store. You got a broad ideal. You get community behind you. Your community can own your own grocery store.
And I'm in favor of starting a grocery store and reinvesting the money in the community. I may not see part of my investment, my grandkids may see it. But I'm not trying to pull the money out. You know, you need people who invest that can have long-term goals. Not, "I need my money back after a year." Need it back after a year, don't invest. If you can get it back after ten years, then invest. And your grandkids and some other kids will be able to see what you have invested in. And they may, I may be dead wrong, but my grandkids will be able to reap what I have invested in. We can do it ourselves.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sorry, I didn't want to make a comment, so I wanted to make a comment.
Sure.
And that simply is that no other district in Tulsa has to do that, so I should do Tulsa.
Reese's, 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 uh, no, it's not Coop. I said Coop. All those grocery stores, Walmart, all those places, they invest where they're gonna make money. They're gonna put their store where they can make a profit. If North Tulsa wants someone to do it for them, I don't, I believe we do it for ourselves. If they put their money, you can't force them to put money in your, in your neighborhood. If it's my money, you're gonna tell me where to spend it, what to put, where to put my money. People, businesses are attractive where they can make money. If North Tulsa stopped going to Admiral and more shopping than Walmart, Walmart will come to Tulsa.
You better say that. They won't do it.
They would bring one where the money is. The same thing with a grocery store. If you stop going to Fifty, Lewis, and spending your money at Reese's, they will put a store in North Tulsa.
Yeah, now you talk.
they will put a store in North Tulsa. If you stop spending your money at these other stores, they will put one where the money is. There's plenty of money in North Tulsa and enough people who spend their money in those grocery stores that will come to your neighborhood to get the money. You don't have to, you can't make them do it without stopping the Dollar General.
Thank you. Next speaker. Our final speaker is going to be Carmen Petty.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I am against the moratorium. I don't think that it's beneficial to the city, that it's beneficial to the people of our community. And I just want to share a little perspective of why dollar stores are even doing what they're doing now. Former First Lady Michelle Obama, in her Healthy Eating Initiative back in two thousand eleven, got together a group of major food retailers who promised to open or expand fifteen hundred grocery or convenience stores in and around neighborhoods with no supermarkets by two thousand sixteen. By their own account, they fell short. There were, the Big Box, the seventy-five major food retailers opened ten thousand three hundred stores and new locations from two thousand eleven to two thousand fifteen. Two thousand four hundred and thirty-four of those stores were grocery stores. You take away the convenience stores and the dollar stores, which generally don't sell fresh fruits, vegetables, or meats, and barely more than two hundred and fifty of those new supermarkets were in so-called food deserts or neighborhoods without stores that offer fresh produce and meats. As the larger supermarket chains have been slow to build in food deserts, dollar stores have multiplied rapidly. Three chains, Dollar General, Family Dollar, and Dollar Tree, made up two-thirds of the new stores in food deserts, and the dollar store sector is consolidating, and Dollar Tree and Family Dollar are now one. Creating the largest dollar store chain in the nation, and in the process, less competition and less incentive to diversify what these stores, what these stores offer. So research has shown that some dollar store chains have started dipping their toes into selling fresh produce. Dollar General has opened up about a hundred and fifty-dollar general market stores. There's one in Tishomingo that sells fresh vegetables, fruit, and meat. Though that format makes up only one percent of the chain's twelve thousand-plus stores. Have we even considered asking them to do that? Because they need to, I hope Dollar General is here and listening somewhere, because they need to take into consideration the needs of the community where they put their stores. The dollar stores are popping up everywhere in food deserts, but that doesn't mean anything if the owners don't give customers the opportunity for fresh produce. Supermarkets often build stores close to each other to compete in the area and highlight each other's stores niche. The stores typically look for neighborhoods that can support their format rather than changing their format to fit the neighborhood. Has anybody asked Reese's and Walmart and Sprouts and Whole Foods and all those other grocery stores why they aren't trying to figure out how they can fit? Because if, if that's the most important thing, why can't they fit? Why don't they want to put a grocery store anywhere close to North Tulsa? And then why is Warehouse Market all but about to close, and Reese's is right behind them? So we have to do, we have to do things on our own. I agree with Clay, I agree with your suggestion. We're gonna have to put our money together and do it ourselves. There are, there's plenty of research, many people have done research to, to this particular conversation. And we need to begin to put our money where our mouth is and quit playing. Because it's really important for our community to continue economic development. This moratorium is not gonna do us any good. Certainly not gonna do any good for the city's sales tax. So we have to do something that's gonna be beneficial in the long run for everybody. There's nothing wrong with Dollar General, like everyone has said, "If you don't want to go in a Dollar General, don't go." You go, but you don't. If you don't want to go, don't go. Because the same thing that they sell, they sell in the big store. Honestly, they sell it in the big store, and they package it that way. And let me just tell you this. We are teaching at, at our charter school, Langston Hughes Academy, we're teaching our children how to be, how to be self-sustaining. We now have a, a garden called the Soldier Farm, and our students are growing their own produce so that they can give back to the community. And we're teaching them how to be, how to create that sense of sustainability. And we're gonna teach them how to package their own things so they can sell them in a grocery store, or maybe in a Dollar General if they're buying their product. That's a million-dollar business for our kids. A million-dollar business if they do it right. So we have to do something. This moratorium makes no sense to me, and I think that you should both know.
Thank you. That's our last speaker. We'll open it up now for council discussion. Councilor Hall Harper.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone, my community, for coming out and showing your concern and your support. It takes courage to, to come and to, to speak your mind. I want to first be clear that the intent of the proposed moratorium is to address specific issues. And we are talking about proliferation and unbalanced development.
Yes.
Those are the primary concerns. It is not a stand against business. If you look at section four on the pa, on the last page of the moratorium, or on the ordinance language, it says during the term of this moratorium, "The Tulsa Metropolitan Area Planning Commission shall hear any appeal from an affected owner of property and shall recommend to the city council whether or not to grant an exemption from the provisions of this moratorium." The city council for good cause shown may grant an exemption from the provisions of this moratorium. And so it is not stopping economic development. It is not stopping businesses.
That's right.
Any good, solid moratorium is gonna have two things. It's gonna have an exception, and it's going to have a beginning and an ending date. And the hundred and eighty days is simply to allow the city government, our legal department, our planning department, to, our city council, to get together and come up with a, a policy, change our zoning code, if that's what it takes, whatever it takes, to address the issues. The issues are proliferation and unbalanced development. And those things lead to the other issues that a lot of us have spoken to today about our life expectancy gaps and the fact that we don't have quality foods in our communities. All of those things are great ideas, and we're doing a lot of those. We have a lot of community gardens and different projects going on in schools. Those things are being done, and they've been done for years. But they're Band-Aids.
Exactly.
They're Band-Aids. They're not solving the problem.
They can provide for the whole community.
Okay, so when you have programs and initiatives at the grassroots level, which we have, and we need to do more of, it's great to hear that Langston Hughes is doing that. Walt Whitman is doing the same thing. There are a lot of programs that are addressing these issues in that manner. But this grassroots, you now have an opportunity to enact policy. When you put policy with boots on the ground, grassroots efforts, that is how you effectively address an issue. I am not saying we can only do one thing. I'm saying we have to do a multiplicity of things to address this issue. This issue just didn't raise up two years ago or two weeks ago. And so it's going to take several things to be done at our grassroots level as well as at our municipal, local government level. We have the authority and the responsibility
Yes.
to do this. And so don't fall for that, please. There comes a point when proliferation and unbalanced development can have a negative effect on a community. I'm not saying close down the ones we have. I, I patronize them as well. What I'm saying is we have enough.
That's right.
Thank you.
That's all I'm saying. And give us the opportunity to recruit and get other options as far as retail, that including fresh fruits and vegetables and meats, as well as clothes, shoes, all the things that anyone needs, everything that you have to leave your community to purchase.
That's right.
That's all this is. Period. And so again, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. Know that this is not against business. I know that that is the first thing that our, some of our organizations in the community that promote businesses will say, but that's not the case. Don't be scared away with that, please. My fellow councilors, that is not the issue.
That's right.
The issue is proliferation and unbalanced development, which we have in District One. Yes, I wanted this in one district. And if, and if I could, and if that sounds like that's the biggest issue, I would like to amend or at least request that the ordinance be amended to include that, if that would get the support of this city council. It is not forever. It is temporary so that we can address an issue. That's it.
One Tulsa, right?
Yes, one Tulsa. The last thing that I want to make, that when, when we have a proliferation of anything that, that we, we've had some of the comments spoken about the morale and, and what that says to a community, we need to consider that. We need to consider that. When you continue to, as I've said, if, when you continue just to feed people dollar food, they're gonna continue to eat it until you give them something better.
That's right.
And I'm trying to do something better. It's just that simple. And again, not against discount dollar stores or small box as is related in the, in the ordinance. I patronize them, but we want better options, and we deserve better options. So I would please ask that if that, we can have those conversations. If we can amend this ordinance to affect just District One, then I would ask that that be done so that it would garner the support needed to pass. Thank you.
Councilor Hall Harper, can I ask you a question? We had communicated a little and had had a chance to talk more about this. I had suggested to you over the weekend maybe a way to, and I haven't talked to anyone legal or anything to know if, if that would approach, you know, if that would pass legal muster. But, but rather than, as you know, I have significant concerns about doing it citywide. As, as many people here have pointed out, they don't see that it's a problem, too many, too many discount stores in most of the city. So the idea of curbing development citywide feels like, you know, we're trying to kill a fly with a sledgehammer or something. And we could, if we could focus on the very specific issue that you're trying to address, which is getting better healthy food options in your community. So the suggestion that we, you and I had kind of tossed back and forth was defining not by council district, which I think legal felt was sort of this arbitrary geographic district, but if we were to define it by food desert, which there's an existing, I don't know if we think that's accurate or not, the USDA uses, but even if we were to define that ourselves, and say within, you know, a full-service grocery store with produce and meat within a mile or something. And I'm throwing that, I'm not saying that's the real definition. I think it's important that you could work with your community to define that and use that as the parameter. The other piece, which I know is harder, that I personally would feel much more comfortable with, rather than a moratorium on a specific kind of business, is to say, "This is what we want." Not this is, we're against it, but say, "In this area, which we have designated as a food desert in Tulsa, if you're gonna come in and be this kind of store, we require these things of you." And then define that. And I believe the things that people have talked about are produce, fresh, you know, perishable meat, perish, fresh meat, fresh produce, those types of things. That, to me, is a lot more focused on achieving what you want and not, you know, not unintentionally ending businesses in other parts of town, which I know isn't your goal. Would you be open to those kinds of, to coming up with something that would do it that way, or either, either of those two pieces there?
A lot of those things that you are mentioning were discussed in the various meetings we've had. Because as you know, this started in early May, and so we're coming on four months. So absolutely, I've always said that. Those are the discussions that we've had with city and legal, in planning. And as I've said, whatever it takes. So, no, absolutely. To answer your question, yes. I'm certainly willing to do whatever it takes to address the need, but we can, we can certainly talk about those things, yes. And I've, I've actually thought that this, after having all those discussions, this is the best option that planning and legal came up with. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking we'll probably be back here again, saying the same things, because these are the very discussions that we had.
Depending on how this goes tonight, if this, if the vote doesn't go the way you want tonight, I mean, I'd like to sit down with you and talk about this, see if we can structure this in a way that I think would achieve the goals that you're outlining here, and maybe can, and help balance some of those other things. And I mean, our committee right now that I'll do that and advocate for that, if we can come up with something that, that will do that. I, I, as, and we've had this conversation both in public meetings and privately. I do, as I said, have a real concern with doing something, and I, I totally understand what you guys are saying, and I know I don't live it, I don't, but I mean, I hear what you're saying. And I have a, I have a Dollar General a half mile from my house, so it's not just in North Tulsa. But I know I have other choices, and that's the big difference. I can go there and pick the wrapping paper and the toys or the candy or the things. And I'm embarrassed to admit, and I know some people, I've had some, I love Dollar Tree. I do almost all my, my, I do, you know, my stocking and Easter bag, my kids' Easter baskets are almost six inches from there. But, but I have choices, and I know that that's the difference. That I can go there and I can pick what I want, and then I can go over to Aldi's or Reese's or the Super Walmart or the other things that are in my neighborhood. And I think, you know, ultimately, success is when we give you those choices, and you can go to the Dollar General when you want, for what you want, and you can go to the other places. So I mean, my, and I've expressed, again, I've expressed this in multiple conversations. I mean, my concern with this approach is I don't think it gets us where you want. It maybe gets us not having another Dollar General, but I don't know that it moves us toward bringing in the good choices that you need and want in your community, and that's, you know.
We have to do both.
I, I agree. And, and just to, whether it's through a co-op or it's, it's working with Reese's or it's anything, to reiterate again, I think you have a commitment from this council, and everybody, I think, has voiced this one way or the other. But certainly for me, that whatever tools and resources the city has in terms of sales tax incentives, in terms of property tax rebates, in terms of, there are limited things. And as, as numerous people have pointed out, we can't build a grocery store. We legally can't. You don't want us to. We wouldn't like that grocery store rebuilt and ran, and let's be real. But we can use those resources that have been used to do things like bring in a Costco. We can use those same tools to bring in, not, not another Costco, but to bring in the things that are needed in your community. And we'll do that. I mean, I'm just pledging to you right now that we've got, it's gonna be a little bit, but we've got that, you know, there's gonna be revitalization money and some other things that are gonna come up in vision, and we can maybe look at those things. We're doing the, I think I mentioned to you, we made sure that we included an assessment of these kind of stores in the retail study, RFP, that we just completed that's gonna go out, so we can come back and bring some stuff that'll really help move in the direction that you're trying to, that you're trying to move for your community. And this last thing, and I know this, I'm sure there's gonna be some other councilors who have comments here. And I know, I mean, I'm not living this, but there's some people here who spoke, who my kids are in school with your kids. And I see, you know, those kids, and I know, and that breaks my heart when I know not just the life expectancy overall. We're not, you know, fellow moms at Carver and Booker T., but I know that those kids are at risk in so many other ways that my kids aren't. I know that that bias, no matter how much I think or I don't want to have it, I have it. And I know that I have some, there are things that I get in my life that I don't even have to think about that, that are a struggle or, or, even if it's, even if you struggle, you don't get to get a whole lot of that stuff. The fact that, that life expectancy gap, that's not your problem, that's our problem. It's a community's problem. It's immoral. It's unacceptable. And it's also why, and I hope everybody here knows this, that this was, it was one of the things that made the, our top priorities as a community, as a city council, that we unanimously committed to with our strategic plan and recognizing, and the mayor has certainly been a leader in this area, but that that, that is not an acceptable way to be one Tulsa, to have kids who are growing up on one part of town and who can go to school with my kids, but they don't have the same opportunities that my kids. And that's not right. And we'll do what we can, and we will continue to, and we need you to come out here and do this. We need to hear this. Again, even if the vote doesn't go the way you want, you need to change how we approach these problems on an ongoing basis, so if you care. So we, we will continue to work on this problem with Councilor Hall Harper, and regardless of whatever happens here tonight, with, on this issue and the broader issues of access to healthcare services and access to parks and recreation and access to transient jobs and all the pieces that are part of changing that life expectancy.
I just have one follow-up question, and thank you. And those things that are, that we're talking about, we'll address unbalanced development, and we need that. But it's not going to address the proliferation until we have a zoning policy in place that will do that. So I just want to make that comment. Proliferation is something that... Proliferation is something different.
Councillor Dodson, are you intending to speak or what?
This has certainly been a, or provided a lot of information for the councillor to, for the council to consider. We've had a number of arguments ourselves up and down the hallways. But I wanted to address a little bit about the life expectancy that's been spoke of so many times, about the 10-year difference. Because I drug out the numbers today and I looked at them. And I didn't only look at them, I analyzed them quite, quite thoroughly. The average life expect, expectancy in all of Tulsa since 2008 has been 75 years of age. Give or take five years, the normal in Tulsa ranges is between 70 and 80 years of age. There are only four zip codes in all of Tulsa that fall outside the normal range. One is in far south Tulsa in the Tulsa Big B Point area. And the average there is 81 years' age, which is one year above the norm in that 10-year span. Of the other three, two of them have an average age of 67, or 67 to 68. Both of these zip codes. Can you put the map up, please? They are 67 and 68 years of age as the average in those zip codes. Now, both of those zip codes barely touch on the city limit boundaries. There is some small crossover. The rest of it is within Tulsa County. That being said, if you look at those boundaries, this moratorium will only minimally, minimally affect those two, those two zip codes. Now, the final and third zip code, which is zip code 74110, is situated fairly equally between Districts One and Three. In this zip code, the average age is 69. Once again, this is only one year outside the norm between 70 and 80. Now, looking at that corridor, there is a significant difference in that corridor. But while the argument has been made that there is a 10-year difference between the life expectancy in South Tulsa and the life expectancy in North Tulsa, and with the utmost respect to Mayor Binham and his campaign staff, this appears to be inaccurate. When you look, I, I, wait a minute. We listened to you respectfully and I did not interrupt a single one of you. When you look at the norms across the city, the high end is only one year outside the 10-year norm and the low end is one to three outside the norm. So if you consider the norm in Tulsa from 70 to 80, that is a very minimal difference. Now, that being said, can we have the map of the stores? Most of the focus, most of the focus has been Dollar General. Come on. Most of the focus has been on Dollar General and Family Dollar. Absent Dollar Tree, which of course have none north of 244. Doesn't make them any less or more of a problem. We can see that they are scattered throughout the city and it would appear that the presence of these stores have not significantly by themselves impacted the overall life expectancy in Tulsa. There is undoubtedly more pieces to the puzzle. There is more work in these few zip codes than just the lack of healthy foods. And in District Six, I certainly understand economic disparity as I have seen the shift in my own area of town with the loss of retail, recent closing of, of general grocery stores as well, and a lack of desire to invest in some areas of Tulsa. That of course forces those in my community and yours to travel outside the neighborhood. However, as looking at the bigger picture and realizing that this more, more, more term would not significantly impact those one or two zip codes, I cannot see how it will significantly impact the overall look of North Tulsa. We have to look deeper than just that. There's more to the puzzle. Further, further, I take issue with some of the comments directed at racism and the lack of understanding. Without you knowing anything about our personal lives, you make no sense. Please, please. I, I want to say this and I want you to hear it. Because you have automatically assumed that everybody on this council comes from wealth and money and a certain standard of living.
They're not children.
I myself have lived in a household of poverty. I've lived in North Tulsa. I've had a disparity when it comes to income. I've been stuck in areas without available, availability of things and without transportation. I understand that hardship. Absolutely understand that hardship.
Guys, let her, let her, come on, just let her, let her.
I understand the hardship, I get it. I've been there and it hasn't been that long ago. Also in regards to racism, I do not judge any person by the color of their skin and I taught my children to do the same thing. Every one of my children that are a dateable age have dated, have dated outside their race.
Why are you explaining this? Why is it necessary? Guilt, yes, guilt.
Stop. It's not, listen, listen. It's not guilt.
Why is it necessary?
Why is it necessary for you to sit there and call it a crime?
You guys, hey, listen, I, and I hate to say this because it really, and I, I know that this stuff matters deeply. Let's, let, let's, we're not going to be able to get, we, I want everyone to be able to stay in this room and be part of this process all the way through. If it gets too out of control, we're not going to be able to let that happen, so.
We're supposed to be talking about dollar stores.
We're not, we can't have this meeting, we can't have a meeting going on if people are going to be yelling. So are you guys, I know, so everybody got their breath?
Don't play on, don't play on our emotions. Don't, please don't do that.
Sir.
Don't be trying to, to, to make us feel.
You have no sympathy.
You know, sympathy, don't do that to us. We don't, we're a community right here. You know what I mean? We love each other, we live in this neighborhood. We know what, what we're about over here. So don't go down that road like, you know, some sympathy type situation to fraud.
Oh no, it's not that.
What is it about?
You, hey, you have several, okay. If you let me finish, if you let me finish.
Tell me what it's about.
Please sit down and let me finish. Come on, Rob Bobby.
Let her. I, and I know it's, I know it's, we're talking about your family, we're talking about your, we're talking about something that really matters. But thank you, just let's let her finish. I appreciate it, sir. I know, I know stuff's heated. Has everybody got a chance to kind of catch your breath? We're good? Okay.
I am addressing, I am addressing the fact that there have been statements made from this group that there is racism on this council.
It is.
You cannot judge the individual members of this council not knowing where they have come from or what they have been impacted in their life anymore, anymore than you can judge you.
Whoa, whoa.
You know, what seems to drive me crazy doesn't seem to bother you. So I'm going to keep on acting crazy until it drives you crazy too.
The offensive councillor is Connie Dodson, my city councillor.
We understand that, but. But the ca, hey, the, the council has a responsibility here and each person is going to come to that in their own way and each person's going to have to. So councillor Dodson and I know other councillors have some comments here to make. I know that some of these are not things you're, you agree with and I, I understand that that's your right. But please let, have the courtesy and have the respect. They've listened to you, they really genuinely did, listen to them. And you can disagree completely, but just let them speak, please. And this is, I really am, we're going to, if we get more yelling outbreaks, we're going to, and we don't, none of us want that. You guys don't want that, we don't want that. We don't want to have to try to get in front of the room. I want you to be here for this process, so please let us do that. If we could not try to, don't try to even listen more yelling, how about that? Okay. Okay, are you, are you done councillor?
Well, like I said.
I'm going to suggest that, it just. It's personal for, it's personal for everybody. So councillor, I didn't know what you, did you have comments?
Okay, I just want to follow up.
Councillor, uh, councillor. Councillor Ewing had some.
I just want to make one quick comment, because you, you were questioning the 10.7-year expectancy gap, life expectancy gap. That number has, uh, has resulted in studies from public health experts. And, and they are epidemiologists, they know how to assess those numbers. So to pull up something online and to say that that doesn't seem to be the case, I, I'm just saying, that number comes from public health experts. My research studies with various hospitals, public health doctors, physicians and people that do this for a living came up with this number. So I just take issue with you questioning that number.
It's, it's that same data that y'all have been using.
Okay, yeah, I think, um, okay, councillor, councillor Ewing has the floor now.
Bring it back, lady.
Man, you know what? I would say 2017 has been easily the most boring year that I have had on the city council, until today. I mean, I'd get home after city council meetings and my wife's like, how did it go? And I'm always like, yeah, we didn't really do much today, it was kind of a typical day. Nope, nothing controversial, it's always one of the first questions. And it used to be early on with the council, I was like, oh yeah, there's all this juicy stuff. And now it's like, nah, not really. We had a slight disagreement about, um, you know, how high a wall could be or something like that. But we, we haven't really had a good, um, knockdown drag-out up here in a long time. And I frankly, I have missed, I have missed this. I, I say it, I say it all the time, that, that I believe a great community has something for everyone. And Tulsa is the right size of a city to be able to actually do that. And when you get really small, like I used to live in Foil, Oklahoma. Foil, Oklahoma does not have something for everyone. And that's impressive considering like, there's like 30 people live in Foil. You would think, it wouldn't be that hard to please them all, but Foil doesn't. Tulsa can be a great city that has something for everyone. When I say something for everyone, that means, uh, that means different parts of town have different things. Different types of houses to live in, different parks to play in. Different things for kids to do, different things for young adults to do at night. That means it has an urban downtown area and it has a very suburban residential area. It means it's got, uh, cultural centers in the community, uh, where people can experience things that are different than that. Uh, and, and I ran for city council because I wanted to help be a part of building a city that had something for everyone. And I was identifying at the time that while Tulsa had a lot of really great things, uh, and it does, that there were lots of places still where we didn't have something for everyone. And so when these conversations come up, uh, and, and really, these are conversations about, uh, community, how we interact with one another, how, how we empathize with people who we maybe don't understand. And when you bring race into a conversation in any way, the tensions rise, people get defensive, emotions flare and, and it tests the metal of a community. And we've had some tests, right? So, um, you know, the council, this is, uh, I think it's important to remember that, you know, on purpose, the, the people who put this form of government together here set it up like this for a reason. They divided the city up into nine different geographic areas, each representing roughly 43,000 people today, ensuring that the citizens of Tulsa were represented by a diverse group of individuals. And I know that you look up here and you see one person off of many of you who you feel like represents you, at least when it comes to your race. Uh, and I will not try to argue that this is a racially diverse group of people here. Uh, it is absolutely not and, and I mourn that reality. But we are diverse in other ways. There are people up here who make a lot of money and there are people up here who don't. There are people up here who are entrepreneurs and there are people who, uh, have worked in the same company for a long time. There are people up here who spend a lot of time in government, people who have very little experience in government. We've got rookies like councillor Hall Harper down in the end and we've got stealthy veterans like councillor Patrick next to me. He's been here for like 40 years. Uh, yeah. So, uh, my point in that is that when we deal with issues where we, we're going to have differences of opinion, we do all the time between us. Uh, because on purpose, we see things, uh, through our own lenses and with our own experiences informing those opinions. And so an issue like this, it's to be expected. It's to be expected that the nine different people up here would come to different conclusions. There have been times on this council, um, and it seems kind of inconsistent when you look at our track record about how we make these difficult decisions as a group. Sometimes some of us stick to long-held principles. There are people up here who will never support a moratorium, no matter what. It's, it's a principle that they believe is important to stand by. They, they believe no matter what the circumstances, that it communicates the wrong message to the world around us. Tulsa's not open for business. It isn't relative to any one thing or another. I have, I have brought moratoriums forward, uh, for council consideration, that were far different than discount dollar store moratoriums that received the same kind of response from some kind of other council. So sometimes that's what factors in a principle, something we're going to stand by and stick with because it's who we are, it's where we come from. Sometimes the voice of the neighbors is the primary factor in making decisions here. We'll have a hot issue and a bunch of people show up, fill up a room like you and they make a compelling case that the thing that we're considering either should or should not happen. Uh, and sometimes people here are swayed by those comments and sometimes they're not. But sometimes that's the prevailing factor. Sometimes it's just our own personal opinion about the thing. And no amount of neighbors, uh, and, and that's not going to matter. They come into the room feeling like, I just really believe in this. So we're, we are as dynamic as you because we all are human beings. And different days and different situations create different circumstances for each one of us and we got to work together to try to figure that out. This council has agreed to spend millions and millions of dollars addressing the needs of people in Tulsa who are very frustrated by ignoring the youth. We have told people who wanted to expand their business, uh, no, because the neighbors didn't like it. We've told a very popular local gas station, you can have a city street and put a truck stop in an urban neighborhood, even though the neighbors absolutely didn't want it. A mile away, same councillor, same district, backed a corporate drugstore chain who wanted to put a drugstore where an old gas station used to be, even though many of the neighbors hated that idea. We're inconsistent because every situation is different, because we are different. Uh, and we're doing the best we can to try to make sure this city has something for everyone and that we're achieving our highest potential. So, uh, one, one last inconsistency thing we do. Sometimes empirical data is enough. Sometimes like our gut is enough. Sometimes when somebody says, I don't want this in my community because it's bad, we're like, yeah, you're right, that is bad. And sometimes we say, now, any traffic counts, economic impact analysis, scientific data, I will not, I will not give any credit to your opinion unless you have provided me a 30-page report about all the reasons why this is good or bad. We're inconsistent there too. In fact, and I'm not trying to call anyone out, uh, the former councillor in District One, not too many years ago, introduced an ordinance, uh, to restrict liquor stores from opening too close to one another because he believed that the proliferation of those stores was harmful to the community. Legal legitimate businesses in the community, but harmful. No scientific data was presented, but we didn't argue it because it was just a general acknowledgement that, yeah, maybe that's true. acknowledgement that, yeah, maybe that's true. Maybe you stack a bunch of anything real close to, a bunch of other stuff like it, and that creates a problem, right? So this inconsistency, to wrap this point, is not a sign of corruption. It's not a sign of, of poor intellect or character. This inconsistency is a sign of our humanity. And I'm hopeful that tonight, as we have a difficult conversation and we make a difficult vote, that we can remember that humanity trumps all, pardon expression, all, all other things. And so I know that there's been a pressure from many of you who made comments tonight to make this issue or to tie this issue to health outcomes. It was a, for some of us, a well-taken, uh, approach. We're all familiar with the disparity in health outcomes in Tulsa and the rest of the city. It's been a well, um, advertised statistic. But I would suggest that maybe this issue doesn't even need to be tied to that. Um, because maybe we're talking about a different problem. Maybe we're talking about the health of hope in the community. Maybe we're talking about the health of self-esteem in the community. Uh, and I would argue, as we talk about our humanity tonight, that nothing is more important to a community than hope and than its belief in itself. So what I hear is that we've got people that live in our city that are doing everything they can and it's all odds against a history that has betrayed them, to rise up, to claim a better future for themselves, for their children. And this part of our community, we might not understand because we're different, says enough of this thing. You're telling me that this is hurting me? And I don't need to see a scientific analysis of what this is doing to your community? I don't care what the scientific analysis of discount dollar stores and their impact on life expectancy are. I don't, I don't know what it is. I don't care. Because to me, you don't even need to make that case. Low-income neighborhoods have certain characteristics. And we are familiar with what those are. They have empty storefronts, they have under-maintained public spaces, they have lights that are burned out, they have overgrown areas, undeveloped areas, full forests of undeveloped acres right in the middle of a community. They've got boarded-up houses for those that have been bulldozed because somebody didn't maintain them. And they've got discount dollar stores all over the place. So it is a crazy meeting and it's in fact no stretch at all to understand why you are saying to us, "This is a characteristic of a low-income neighborhood. This is a characteristic of the bad part of town. This is a characteristic of a part of the community that is somehow not worth as much as the other parts of the city." And we don't want that characteristic to be true about us. And that's good enough.
And that was Blake Ewing.
And I'll wrap. I've probably talked way too long.
For District Four.
I have that habit, I'm sorry. Uh, the Knight Foundation, which is a well-respected foundation, conducted a study that they called "The Soul of the Community Study." And, uh, with Gallup as the, as the polling body, they polled forty-three thousand people across, across the United States in different communities. And they asked these people a series of questions over years about the things that caused them to be attached to their community. And that's kind of a difficult thing to understand, but, um, what it means to be attached to a community. So I'll just read a couple of bits from this. And this is the thing that I would challenge my colleagues to contemplate if we're concerned about data and if we want to understand what the long-term implications of this type of thing in our community mean for us. There were twenty-six cities that participated, many of them, Tulsa was not one, but many of them around us, Wichita was one of the closer ones. Some quotes from that study. "In today's challenging economic climate, community leaders are seeking new ways to attract and retain people, develop prosperous economies, add intellectual capital, and create jobs. The report provides a fresh perspective of the current driving factors of passion and loyalty in a community, most importantly, it represents the voice of the residents themselves. What makes residents love where they live? What draws people to a place and keeps them there? The study provides evidence that drivers that create emotional bonds between people in their community are consistent in virtually every city and can be reduced to just a few categories. Interestingly, the usual suspects, jobs, the economy, and safety, are not among the top drivers. Rather, people consistently give higher ratings for elements that relate directly to their daily quality of life, an area's physical beauty, opportunities for socializing, and a community's openness to all people. Remarkably, the study also showed that communities with the highest levels of attachment have the highest rates of gross domestic product growth. Discoveries like these open numerous possibilities for leaders from all sectors to inform their decisions and policies with concrete data about what generates community and economic benefits. Over the past three years, the Soul of the Community Study found positive correlation between community attachment and local GDP growth. Those whose residents were more attached saw more local growth. It's a key metric in assessing community success because GDP growth not only measures its economic success, but also its ability to grow and meet residents' needs. Generally, demographics are not the strongest driver of attachment. In almost every community Gallup study, attachment is more strongly related to certain perceptions of the community than to their age, their race, their income, or other demographic characteristics. In other words, whether a resident is young or old, wealthy or poor, black, white, Hispanic, matters less than his or her perception of the community. This reality gives community leaders a powerful tool to influence residents' attachments to the community, no matter who they are." Pardon me reading to you, but I would argue that we have even now some data that says how people attach to their community isn't just kind of important. It is in fact the driving force for that community's ability to become successful. And I don't just mean economically successful, I mean successful in all ways. You don't want people leaving North Tulsa for other parts of town. The last time there was a census, the district in our community that had the most population loss was District One. People don't leave places to which they are attached. This is important, and we have a chance to communicate tonight to an area of town that for years and years has felt uncared for, that you matter. And that even if we don't understand, we're gonna have your back because you're our neighbors and you matter. And, and there are people that will vote no. And, and I would ask that you don't vilify those folks. They've got a value that they have considered contrary to, to this value of stopping these discount dollar stores or whatever, right? They've decided that the value of not communicating that we're not open for business to the development community around the world is of very high importance. I would ask, though, that before we make votes tonight, that we ask if we can come to any conclusion, that any other possibility that we could value trumps the value of saying to our neighbors that you matter to us. For me, it does not. Those other issues that people will bring up are legitimate issues. I'm not even gonna attempt to delegitimize them or argue. They're legitimate. Are they more important when making decisions tonight than valuing our neighbors and then communicating to a part of the city that has long been neglected and disregarded that you are important to us? I want what you want. One Tulsa has been said tonight in a sarcastic way several times. And I get it, because I think you've heard it a lot of times and it sounds really good. And, and for many of you, uh, it hasn't come true.
That's it.
At all.
That's true.
It has been words without action.
Right.
But I want what you want. I want one Tulsa.
I do too.
I think we have a chance to make a statement.
In our lifetime.
Thank, thank you, sir. I think we have a chance to make a statement today, to take a step, one little step, towards one Tulsa. And I'm confident that my colleagues here, however they vote today, will, will work together to help solve the issues that have been presented this evening. And I'm not just talking about health outcomes. I'm talking about when you wake up and walk out your door and your part of town looks like the other parts of town. We're not in the grocery store opening business, but we are in the taking care of the community business. Um, and we've got a part of our community that needs taken care of. So I, I hope and I believe that you can count on us to do that and to be an active part of this conversation about how to solve the issues that we've heard about tonight moving forward. Thank you.
Others who have not yet spoken who wish to have a word?
Chair, Councilor Lincoln.
So the honor capital letter that we had, that you sent around, how, how close is that to becoming a reality? We didn't talk at all about that tonight.
I don't have a specific timeline. I know that there has been steps made, uh, in the right direction to make that happen. I know that in this month, I want to say next week or at least two weeks, no, more than two weeks from now, they will be meeting with Kathy Taylor and our economic development team to continue to address issues and to make sure, you know, we do what we can as a city government to make it so. And so I am, I feel very positive about it, I can say that.
Yeah, I, and I heard you say that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I, I thought I heard you say it was ninety-nine percent chance or something like that.
Yeah, that was my estimation.
Okay. Well, that's great.
And that maybe just because I'm so happy about it. But I do think that it is, it's a very good possibility.
Yeah, me too. And, and that's a grocery store with...
Full service.
Fresh meat.
Quality.
Fresh bread, fresh vegetables.
One, we need about five.
Oh, I totally agree.
But, but it's a start.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's on. But I, I, I just don't want us to lose sight of that progress because it hasn't been mentioned tonight at all. And, and I'm, I'm not going to support the moratorium, but I am, as I told you last time, going to continue to support every proactive effort to continue to bring those honor capital-type successes to North Tulsa. I'm absolutely behind you on that. And, and I wish we could have used even, even these three hours that we've been here together to meet about opportunities and ways that we could take some of these, whether it's the co-op idea, whether it's, you know, a sales tax incentive idea for more grocery stores, any of those opportunities. And whether we've spent three hours here and this passes or doesn't pass, I'm still committing to you that I'll sit at any table at any time to continue to think through these options with you, not only from the governmental sector, but from the philanthropic sector as well. So you've got my agreement, I think you probably have it from virtually everybody up here and so many other people in the community as well. The last thing I'll say is that, you know, nobody, nobody talked about where the mortality rate difference was back in two thousand. We talked about the ten point seven years, it was thirteen point eight years.
Fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen years, which, so we, we made three years of progress, but we got ten point seven years to go. And, um, the philanthropic sector has made huge investments, the governmental sector has made huge investments. And I think decreasing that and causing that decrease, um, but we gotta double our efforts and triple our efforts to get rid of those ten point seven years. And you know, as well as I do, it doesn't come just through dissuading dollar stores to come to a certain section of town or anything else. It comes from increasing access and quality of healthcare, increasing transportation services so that people can get to grocery stores or healthcare services or whatever and everything else. And we need to continue to keep our eye on them all, not just from a discount dollar store perspective or a grocery store perspective, but from all those other ones as well. So only anything and everything I can tell you, I do have differences. I mean, I'm just an economist and I don't support these kinds of tactics in limiting the growth of, I think, the grocery store.
Phil Lincoln is scared.
Grocery store and another couple of grocery stores. And, you know, dollar stores won't want to locate up there because the competition is too extreme. And so I believe in the free market system and, but I also believe in your community and your direction and your leadership. And again, we'll pledge my support to help you in any way, if you wish.
And, and just to add to that, the, the issue with the proliferation, and you're kind of speaking to that, because it makes it difficult for full-service grocery stores and other types of retailers to come in. Because we know, when it comes to business, it's about location, location, location. And if they are proliferating a community, it makes it difficult for retailers to be able to come in. And again, all I'm trying to say is, we have enough. I want to allow or give the opportunity for other retailers to come in, whether it's retail or, or groceries, full-service grocery stores.
Yeah, I'm not sure. It was kind of an evolving motion. Is everybody else done with comments and... Yeah, I was gonna say, if we could, because I think it was kind of changing as you were...
Okay, I, I would like to move for a friendly amendment to the ordinance language to redefine the boundaries to include District One.
We know y'all have a budget.
Second.
Keith, please call the roll.
Are we voting on the amendment or are we voting on the...
On the amendment?
What is the amendment? Please restate your amendment, Councilor.
So was there, what is she amending then? I just, I, I would, I, I was under the impression it would be my suggestion, listening, Mr. O'Melia can, can correct us. She's amending her own motion, so it would make more sense for her to withdraw that and just make the motion stating what it is she's trying to say. Would that not be right, Mr. O'Melia? I mean, I know, I didn't think she made a formal motion.
I think, I think you're correct, Councilor, Madam Chair. I would, I would just say that with an amendment to this particular, um, draft of this ordinance, that I would, I would urge that the council exercise caution because I think we all recognize, and you have recognized in your comments, that there are complicated legal issues involved. Not only legal issues, but planning issues that are involved in this, in a moratorium and zoning changes. We've been through, you know, that one and all the history. And as Councilor Hall Harper said, in a several-month history where there's been lots of variations and focuses of various iterations of the moratorium. And I think we've been very innovative of, in the planning department and in my department, and I have to give credit to my real estate and zoning division, my office, but to come up with a permanent citywide spacing requirements that are focused on these small-box discount stores. So, and I want to emphasize that, it's permanent citywide spacing requirements that is called for as part of this ordinance. And, uh, the, that is, when you're talking about that, my real estate and zoning division has had very real legal concerns with limiting a moratorium part of this to a single district, while the efforts of the planning commission are going on to, as, as the ordinance reads, to draft the proposed amendment holding a public hearing... to draft the proposed amendment, holding a public hearing or hearings to consider the same, and make its recommendation to the city council for its review and proof there are just serious legal issues with trying to limit the moratorium to a single district or less than citywide, when the zoning regulation and spacing requirements have to be for the entire city.
Mr. Omealia, can I, can I, and I'm sorry to interrupt, I, I...
And language is really important, which we'd have to regraft the whole...
Well, for clarification on that, you heard and we have not spoken about that at all, but, but if we were to try to craft it in a way that was not geographic boundaries, but was tied to, which we do obviously in other zoning things, we say you can't do certain things that are near a school, or you can't do, so, so we have things that are different in different parts of the city based on circumstances of that, you know, we, we define it in a way other than it's not citywide and it's not just a specific geography. So if we were to, to come up with a definition, working with legal and planning, that, and I will say to define a food desert, and, and which I'm not prepared or equipped to do tonight, I don't think we are, but if we were to come back and say, okay, in an area that we as a city and our zoning code define as a food desert, certain conditions will apply, whatever those are that, that were worked out. That, something like that seems to me that that could be legal, because we do do that in other instances. We, we limit growth in certain areas, like I said, close to churches, close to schools, liquor stores close to each other, et cetera.
Well, I'm, I'm neither a planning expert, and I don't pretend to be a zoning and real estate expert. That's why I have the entire department that does that, of attorneys. However, I would just point out that this, at one time, and I can't tell you when in the, in the several-month history of this, there was a draft of a moratorium and an ordinance that had to do with food deserts, and there were some legal problems with that. Now, I don't know what they were, can't go, so I can't go into them tonight, but, but you are correct, Madam Chair, we would have to go back essentially to the drawing board to do something in that, in that vein, not to say that it's, that, that it's impossible to do, because it may very well be possible.
Well, and, and, I mean, there actually are, we could set our own, but I mean, the federal government and other entities I know have defined food deserts in ways that it's not, it would not be an arbitrary thing. And the reality is, when I've looked at it, at least in looking at the map, it would not, it would not be exclusively District One, but it would be most of District One, and there'd be pieces of other districts, but most of the city obviously would not qualify as a food desert. So it would, it would in essence be very similar to District One, but it would be tied to, to some criteria that, that, you, it would still be a citywide process, you know, you could say this is applied citywide, and if something happened in another part of the city where they also then became a food desert, then those criteria would come into play. Counselor Ewing, I believe, had a question for you, Mr. Omealia.
Yeah, so we put a moratorium in the Arkansas River Corridor because we were specifically concerned about developments occurring in that geographic area while we were crafting an overlay. We put a moratorium specifically inside the inter-dispersal loop when we were specifically concerned about demolitions of buildings occurring inside that geographic area. It isn't unprecedented for us to apply a moratorium in a geographic area. I, I get it that I'm not a lawyer and I'm only kind of trying to pretend to be one, but it doesn't make any logical sense to me...
At all.
...that we've established history of defining geographic areas by things such as highways or how close they were to the river. But we're not allowed to do it in this case. We have to apply it citywide. We didn't do a citywide moratorium on development, we did a moratorium on river development. We didn't do a citywide land demolitions. We identified that downtown had unique characteristics that justified a moratorium specific to the inter-dispersal loop. Counselor Hall Harper has stated repeatedly that the objective of this moratorium is to stop proliferation of these types of stores where they are, pretty simply, to stop proliferation, to deal with unbalanced development. We don't have proliferation of discount dollar stores across the community. We have them primarily in one place, and the beginnings of proliferation in another. I think it makes perfect, just logical sense, and I'm glad to go toe-to-toe with an attorney in this argument, that we apply the moratorium in a geographic area where this condition exists. The only place this condition exists is in the area Counselor Hall Harper has identified. So further, furthermore, and I would say this especially to my colleagues and, and to all of you who came to speak in favor of this, I hope that you hear this clearly. The moratorium is a six-month stop. So if, if you folks lose tonight, you've lost, what you would have, what you would have gained was a six-month stop on this occurring, a new store occurring in your neighborhood.
Not necessarily.
And I know there's the possibility that that could happen and that that will suck if no one happens inside the next six months, but what you will have lost is that. What we will gain, if it passes, is six months with which to solve these little legal nuances, to have some more debates amongst ourselves and with planning professionals and legal staff, to look at data or conditions or any other things that we need to consider, and to craft long-term policy dealing with spacing requirements or food deserts or whatever. Tonight, the theme before us is, do we want to pass a 180-day moratorium? And now it's been amended in one specific part of town where we've already got 15 of these places, so that we can spend the next six months doing what we've been elected to do.
There's two minutes left in the podcast. We had to end this soon before the vote, if there is a vote.
Town halls in the community and hear the voices of the people, and to work with legal staff and planning professionals to craft an ordinance that will pass the...
I'm not yelling about who we are. I'm not doing that.
We don't have to solve it all today, thank God. All we have to do today is decide whether or not we're going to push, push the pause button while the council gets to work trying to solve this problem in the long term. That's all.
I have a question for you real quick.
Counselor Gutz.
If the moratorium is changed to include only District One, that does not keep the ordinance from being drafted to include a spatial requirement for the entire city, does it?
You mean the zoning?
Yeah, the zoning.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't stop it. I'm just saying that there are serious legal problems with doing that. That's what, that's what I was pointing out. It doesn't stop it necessarily. But again, you have to pass an ordinance, and there is no, if you change, if you change this, there is no moratorium ordinance. This is a very specific ordinance with a lot of specifics drafted into it that's taken a lot of time. To just say we're going to have a moratorium, we've been, we started down that road months ago.
So you're telling me that by changing this to reflect only District One, it invalidates the language and then thus the ordinance that we would be voting on?
Thus.
Well, if the moratorium, if the moratorium is for one district, then the, then the zoning change means only to one district.
I disagree. I believe that...
I'm sure she disagrees. This is the end of my podcast, I'll start another.